All right, we are opening our regular Board of Education meeting for Washington Unified School District, June 12th, 2025. And we are going to begin with our land acknowledgement. We acknowledge the land currently occupied by Washington Unified School District as the traditional home of the Potwin people. These sovereign people have been caretakers of the area since time immemorial. Despite centuries of genocide and occupation, the Potwin people continue as vibrant and resilient federally recognized and unrecognized tribes, fans, and rancherias. Today, we honor and recognize our Potwin tribal neighbors for their contributions as the caretakers of the Sacramento Valley and honor their sustained existence. With their blessing and continued guidance, Washington Unified School District seeks to provide an accessible, equitable, and supportive institution of learning and experience. And with that, we're going to do our pledge of allegiance. Can our student athlete Brooke White, would you lead us in the pledge? All you have to do is stand up and then get started.
To the flag, driving states of America, to the republic which stands, one nation, your God, indivisible.
Thank you. Okay, now we have our roll call vote. Vice President Coffey here, Clerk Castro.
President.
Trustee Hunt.
Here.
Trustee Wong.
Here.
Thank you. Announcement of action taken in closed session. We have Government Code Section 54957.6, Conference with Labor Negotiators, WUSA, CSAA, and Management. Information received. Government Code 54957.1, pending or potential litigation. Approval of the settlement agreement and general release between Washington Unified School District and apparent for the 2024-2025 school year. Direction was given. Item 3, Government Code Section 54957, Public Employee Discipline Dismissal Release. Information was received. Item 4, Government Code Section 54957, Public Employee Superintendent Valuation will return to closed session. Item 5, Significant Exposure to Litigation Pursuant to Government Code 54956.9, Conference with Legal Counsel. Anticipated Litigation, One Potential Case. Direction was given. Approval of the tort claim number 6453009. That will be moved to the June 26th Board Meeting, which is our next Board Meeting. And Government Code 54956.8, Our Property, 2101 Stone Boulevard. Negotiating Parties, Washington Unified School District, DWK, and CBRE under negotiations. Instructions to Negotiators Regarding Options to House the District Office Staff. Direction was given. Are there any changes to the agenda? Okay, then can I get a motion to approve?
Motion. A second?
Okay, move by Clerk Castro, seconded by Trustee Wong. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye to vote aye. Okay, and that now takes us to our communications and celebrations. We're going to recognize Brooke White's inspiring leadership and allyship in honor of Pride Month. Brooke White, River City High School Student Athlete, Yergos Kazanis, welcome.
Good evening, President Kirby Gonzalez, trustees, and members of our audience. In this item, we are honored to welcome River City High School Student Athlete Brooke White to the board meeting this evening. Brooke is being recognized for her outstanding athletic achievements, exemplary sportsmanship, and unwavering allyship for her fellow competitors and members of the LGBTQ community. Her leadership and advocacy both on and off the field, I should say the track, embody the values, respect, and inclusion and unity that are central to WUSD's vision. Before I invite Brooke to the podium, I'm going to ask Melinda if she could queue up a video real quick.
Teen and track star speaking out following the scrutiny of the state finals.
President Trump shined a bright spotlight, as you know, on the state track and field championships this weekend over trans athlete Abi Hernandez competing in female events.
Internet politics at large. Steve is live in West Sacramento with a local track star who ended up sharing that spotlight and a medal with Hernandez. Steve?
Yeah, live here at River City High School where this high school senior scored not one but two medals, including one for the long jump. It landed her right in the middle of national politics.
I'm feeling so much relief.
River City High School senior Brooke White is back home with this silver medal proof of her state finals performance.
So this one's my 100 meter hurdles medal.
Brooke White is running amazing.
She won silver medals in the girls' 100 meter hurdles and in the girls' long jump. A place she shared on the medal podium with trans athlete Abi Hernandez. This photo captured the pair smiling wide for the cameras.
How would you describe that that feeling of not only you winning this medal, but also sharing it with Abi Hernandez?
Yeah, I mean, the first thing that she did was hug me and I hugged her back.
White says the scrutiny surrounding the state finals with protests over the politics of trans athletes in female sports, with President Trump singling out the event, added pressure to all the athletes.
It made me really emotional, seeing how people could be so hateful to a 16-year-old girl.
White says Hernandez's performance inspired her.
It also eased me a lot to talk to Abi personally and see how she was handling the situation as a rock star, like just, you know, she PR'd and I'm pretty sure all three events.
This high school track athlete celebrating success at the state finals. She ended up in the focus of a fierce political fight and found her voice.
Overall, I just want to help foster peace and community and acceptance.
Brooke White will be graduating from River City High School this Wednesday. Next stop, UC San Diego, where she earned an athletic scholarship to also compete in track and field.
Thank you, Melinda. I also want to add that this recognition exemplifies the WUSD portrait of a graduate, highlighting the qualities of empathy, collaboration, and responsible citizenship that we strive so hard to cultivate in all of our students. On that note, I'd like to invite Brooke to the podium.
Hello, I prepared something really short, but I just wanted to thank you all for the recognition and opportunity to speak. I'd like to also thank everyone in our community for the support and kind words. I didn't realize how big of a deal this was, how big my voice was until I heard a lot of feedback and it inspired me to speak up even more. I'm very inspired to speak up more on behalf of athletes and the LGBTQ community. As a competitor, the argument of trans athletes and hate is more hurtful than trans athletes themselves. I believe everyone needs to know that the athletes out there have nothing but love and support for Abi Hernandez, and I think that getting to know her like inspired me to like own who I am as part of the LGBTQ community. Additionally, I think that we can admire how the CIF handled hate speech by pausing the meet and telling everyone in the audience that if they didn't stop their hate, then the meet would continue to stop and pause. It meant a lot to us all, especially how conservative the Clovis area can be. I hope that the Washington Unified School District can take inspiration from the act and from the inclusivity that I experienced and speak up against homophobia and transphobia that may occur. As a suggestion to foster inclusivity and queer visibility, even though we do get out of school a week before Pride Month starts, I think that it'd be pretty cool to have like a pre-Pride activity, kind of how BSU celebrates Black History Month or other cultural fairs. I think that'd be something that the Gender Health Club could put on. And then also, I just again, thank everyone for allowing me to make my mark at River City before I go off to UC San Diego, where I will continue to run track and continue to support everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Wait, Brooke, you have to come back. I think maybe some of my colleagues might have something to say, and then we'd love to come down and take a picture with you too, to celebrate you. Trustee Wong?
Thank you for being braver than most adults. Thank you for being the voice and the hope of tomorrow, the representation of inclusivity and equity and justice. You didn't have to, but you led with love, and that's what this world needs in this moment right now. And I am so inspired and I'm so emotional because so much harm is happening in the world, and I am so grateful that Washington Unified has produced and supported your journey to be the young woman that you are. So thank you for being the inspiration for all of us. Because no matter how old we are, we can learn from others. So thank you.
I just echo Trustee Wong's words, and the only word that came to mind was inspiration. Thank you so much. As Trustee Wong said, you're braver than most of us adults, and I personally am learning from you as well and wish you nothing but luck. You will obviously succeed in everything you do in San Diego and great job, parents as well.
Brooke, is it true that you've been undefeated this year, except for the person who is number one in the nation?
Yes.
Is that true? And that you have, for most of your time, been a dual-sport athlete with basketball as well?
Yeah.
And that you have also had a pretty incredible number of AP and honor courses that you've taken?
Quite a load, yes.
Yeah. And I listened to one of your interviews with the Youth Runner Magazine, and I heard you talk about how sometimes it's easy to have imposter syndrome for kids and that now you can, you know, speak up and be really proud. And I think that this entire community is just really, really proud of you and inspired by you as a student athlete, as a human, and then of course, as a support and as an ally when there's hate speech coming and that you lent a hug. I mean, it was really beautiful. I read the New York Times every day. I open it up and I see River City High School student Brooke White. And it's not every day that we have a kid who's in the New York Times. And having, well, you have a kid, but we also try to take. And so I just really want to thank you for being a role model for all of the adults who are here too in the entire community. And we are so excited for what you will accomplish as you go into your next journey in college. So we'll come on down and we'll take a picture with you.
Okay.
it away.
Okay. In this item, we are honored to welcome Mr. Chris Hanks, River City Productions extraordinaire, that's a new title that we added in there, and the advisor from the River City High School Gender Health Club, Mr. Andrew Hook, to the board meeting this evening. The Gender Health Club serves as a vital resource and support system for LGBTQ+ students and allies at RCHS, proving a safe space for dialogue, advocacy, and empowerment. The club's leadership in organizing the RCHS drag show also further exemplifies its commitment to promoting visibility, acceptance, and pride on campus. By highlighting the contributions of the Gender Health Club and the RCHS drag show during Pride Month, WUSD reaffirms its promise as outlined in the strategic plan to cultivate a culture where diversity is celebrated and all students are supported in becoming their best selves. On that note, I'd like to welcome to the podium Mr. Hook from River City High School and Mr. Hanks from River City High School.
Hey. Sorry, let me get this up. This is the first time I've ever talked here without like a timer, and so it's kind of neat to be able to kind of breathe and relax. So hello everyone, I'm Andy Hook. I am the advisor of the Gender Health Club at River City High School and have been since its inception in 2017. And this is of course, the inimitable Mr. Hanks, without whom the drag show would not happen and not be possible because he does all the real work. So we were invited here to celebrate. We just want to start by saying one, Happy Pride Month. Pride festivities are of course this weekend in Sacramento. The march will be on Sunday and the events will be happening all day Saturday and Sunday, and I highly recommend it. I won't be there because I will be heading down to San Diego for a week of trainings, also work-related. So thank you for having us. We really appreciate the support that the board has given to the Gender Health Club over the years. Several of you who've come to the drag shows, your support is unbelievable, and we could not appreciate it more. Once again, I am, have always been the advisor of the Gender Health Club. Brief history, it was started eight years ago by a trans youth who wanted a club specifically for trans and non-gender conforming students. So at the time, River City also had a gay straight alliance, and this student, who I didn't know very well, came to me and asked if I would be willing to advise this club. I was surprised that they asked me because I'm a cisgendered, straight white guy and had never even really knew the student, but asked what their vision was, and it was all about education. And the student started talking to me about things like binders that trans youth, if used incorrectly, can lead to irreparable harm and broken ribs, things I had no idea of. But the student was so informed and passionate that I was like, yes, I'll happily give you But the student was so informed and passionate that I was like, yes, I'll happily give you a place to meet. And so, it started off, the idea was just to have a safe space for trans and non-gender conforming youth, and also to help educate to make sure that nobody hurts themselves. Over the years, it has since grown. We sort of usurped the GSA when another teacher had to give up those responsibilities. Since then, we have been invited to this very board for the acknowledgement of Trans Day of Visibility. Thank you for that. We've been invited to Yolo County when they finally acknowledged June as Pride Month. We were there to speak to that. We've been invited to march in the Sacramento Pride Parade. We have fought endlessly and tirelessly to create bathroom access for students on campus. It is an ongoing and annual fight in my life. We have reached out to student and staff who've been bullied and find ways to show that there's a place for them on River City and that where they're accepted and they're loved. And of course, three years ago, in response to the trans and homophobic laws being passed across this country and the anti-drag laws in Tennessee, we started our annual drag show. It's three years in running, which means that after this year, there will be no students at River City who know of a time when there was not a drag show at their high school, which I think is kind of fascinating. I did not know what I was signing on when I agreed to do that, and it is a lot of work for Mr. Hanks, who we love very much. I also had no idea what an inspiring and beautiful event it would be. I very honestly think it is the funnest and most just amazing event of the year, every year. And I don't think I'm just saying that because I'm standing in the booth holding back tears, but also because the way people respond to it, it's such a very cool and amazing event, and again, would not be possible without your support. My one true regret is that the last meeting of this school year was right before a track event that happened. And so, we weren't there to support because we didn't know about it, and I haven't even gotten to talk to the club about having a hero from their own high school, though I do once again extend an invitation. Mondays after school, you are always welcome, always, from now into infinity. Mondays after school in room 660, we'd be happy to have you. We celebrate homo-history, their phrase, not mine, and news of the gay every week, and you would be an honored speaker. So, thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Really? The theater person doesn't want to speak? All right. Are there any comments? Will you stay up here, though, for a minute too?
Summer's calling me. Are those tacos? Do you guys hear tacos?
I just want to thank you for all that you do, taking my daughters to the drag show too, has been, there couldn't be a more fun place to be. And you've really protected our kids because they're our most vulnerable students oftentimes, and that is, it's really important that that is a safe space, and you have just really done that and made it so that it's a really special, safe place for our kids. And when the students speak about activism and about peaceful protests, I mean, they know how to do it. Starting a drag show to start a peaceful protest in response to policies you don't agree with, I mean, talk about models in terms of how to raise your voices and elevate them in a positive way against things. So, I couldn't find my pin. I borrowed my daughter's to put on today and to wear, but I just really want to thank you for those spaces because there's nothing better than saying after, you know, done with the show, come on down and join us for a dance party. I mean, it's just so inclusive and so fun and so special, and so I am just really grateful for you. Are we good? Okay, can we come take a picture with you both too? And can you tell us about your shirts when we do that?
Oh, these are our club shirts because we were invited to march in the Pride Parade last year. Because of the drag show, all proceeds go to a charity or nonprofit of the kids' choice. They have a vote at the beginning of the year. So, the first year, it was the ACLU Drag Defense Fund because that was responding to, and for the past two years, it's been the Sacramento LGBT Center. So, the Sac Center invited us to march in the Pride Parade last year, and so I made everybody shirts. And so, these are our Gender Health Club shirts. The logo's a kind of gender flag dragon that we named Drag On by our club artist, Roxy.
Are they walking this year?
Roxy, I think hopefully we'll, are we? Oh, no, sorry. But my wife is currently at a training for the event. She's working it all weekend.
And I should say too, as we come down, that currently Camp Yampas is going on as well, so Mr. Hanks has been busy with his days and with all of our kids doing our theater programs, so thank you for that too. All right, we're going to come down. Okay, and that takes us to association reports. We do not have a student board member report this evening, and President Nep has emailed us with his report. He's not coming this evening, and it looks like President Gondara is also going to Fargus, so we have no association reports this evening. Okay, that takes us to public comment. Do we have public comment this evening?
Yes. So, first, we have Lisa Men, sorry, Menses.
Perfect. I'll read first, just real quick, I have to read this, I'll read this disclaimer. And then, how many public comments do we have?
Three.
These are general, these are public comments, general public?
Yes.
All right. At our regular board meeting held on February 9th, 2023, the board resolved that written public comments received by 3:00 PM on the day of the meeting will be provided to the board but not read into the record during the meeting. We did receive quite a few public comments that we have all read this evening and will be put into the record. Members of the public may address the board on topics of the board agenda during every meeting. In addition, during regular meetings, the public may also address any topic within the jurisdiction of the board. Please know the board is listening to your comments, but by law cannot meaningfully respond in this forum to items not on the agenda. The board may limit the total time for public input on any topic to 20 minutes unless it waives the item limit for an item. Individual speakers may be limited to three minutes to comment on any topic. The board respects the right of members of the public to speak regarding matters within its jurisdiction. However, please recognize that comments regarding students other than the speaker's own children made during a public board meeting may be a violation of the student's right to privacy, and thus, the speaker may be held legally liable. If you reference a student's name other than your own student, you may be deemed out of order. Furthermore, it's important for the public to understand that negative or derogatory comments made against district employees or others, even those made in a public board meeting, may be actionable civil defamation. Although the board may not prohibit such comments, board policy allows the public to lodge complaints against district employees, providing more opportunity to be heard than is allowed under the open meeting law that governs this meeting. Okay, with that said, welcome.
Good evening, Board of Trustees, Cabinet members, and Superintendent Hildreth. I'm here tonight as an Elkhorn parent in support of increasing the budget to complete the long overdue campus monetization project. It's unfortunate that over a year of project delays, combined with rising costs from economic forces, including some politically manufactured ones, AKA the tariffs, have put up steep financial roadblocks. But our kids should not be the ones to pay the price. To the district's credit, recent collaboration between staff and community members has helped ensure that the project plans meet the needs of the community, given limited resources. We're not asking for bigger or fancier buildings. We're simply asking for a school campus on par with the others. Like many other Elkhorn students, my kids attend summer programs at other campuses in the district, and they notice the differences. The other day, I asked my daughter how her first day of summer school at Westfield went, and her initial response was, "The school is so nice. The bathrooms are so new and clean." My kids have even commented that their school is older than their Lola, a Filipino word for grandma. So, yes, students are aware of these inter-campus disparities. They see it, they experience it, and many internalize it. I did want to take a quick moment to express my gratitude for the opportunities this district provides, especially the Dual Immersion Summer Institute and the theater experiences with NorCal School of the Arts through the summer expanded learning programs. These are unique and truly beneficial programs for which I'm incredibly thankful. My kids get extra time to work on their Spanish since we aren't a native Spanish or Spanish heritage family, and most of all, my kids have loved getting the chance to act, sing, and dance on stage with other students from all around the district. Just as these enriching summer programs are available to all students, so too should be clean, safe, and modern learning environments, regardless of where a student lives and goes to school. I fully recognize that market forces and project delays are not always under our control and that resources are tight in our current economy. Hard decisions do have to be made, but the move-in date has already been moved back about a year and a half, and much time and resources have already been invested. Costs will only continue to rise with any additional delays. So, please allow the use of existing reserve funds to ensure the completion of this project. Continue the momentum and make good on the promises made to our community five years ago. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Menses. Okay, our next speaker, Alex Warden. Welcome.
Hi, thank you. Thanks for the opportunity to address all of you and the hard work you do. I have a fifth and eighth grader at Southport. My first concern is that there's a big waitlist for the YMCA aftercare, and my son's on that waitlist, and without that aftercare, he'll be unsupervised at home for three hours a day, probably watching YouTube or Netflix or something like that, as opposed to, you know, being with friends, getting social activity, physical activity, that kind of thing. So, increasing enrollment in that YMCA aftercare program is huge, so that has the capacity to meet the demand. It's really our best option. Second thing would be getting equity between the different band programs. If you go to a band concert, you can hear a big difference between the bands that practice every day and the bands that practice maybe twice a week. I think my daughter's even been kind of embarrassed to play with the other bands sometimes, so you can just see a huge difference there. So, that'd be kind of the second thing to try to improve. And then, the third thing is that it'd be great to have some electives at the middle school level. I know that with a comprehensive seventh through eighth site with much bigger capacity, scheduling's a lot easier. With the small K through eighth sites each trying to accommodate middle schoolers, it'd be nice to be able to take like French one or get into Algebra I and then have that out of the way before high school. And my daughter was excited with the amount of courses offered in high school, and she already planned out her four-year schedule, but may not be able to take everything she wants to just because, you know, can't get a head start on some of those things in the normal middle school experience a lot of us have come to expect from a comprehensive site. Besides that, school's great, and thank you, guys, and yeah, for everything you do.
Thank you. Okay, our next public comment?
Candice Frank Newman.
Hello, esteemed board. It's very quiet tonight because of summer break. I just wanted to speak about the school remodel as well. I've been excited about this back since Measure Z back in 2020, and I did not know at that time that I would be also not just a parent at the school, but also working there as well. So, I spent the last several weeks packing lots of boxes. It made me very grateful that I had just moved in to my classroom a year, for a year, so it didn't take that long to get all of my boxes. But I watched a lot of my colleagues spend an awful lot of time going through things and getting, we are ready, we're ready for this, for this journey that we're going to be on. And I just want to say thank you to the district and to all of the people who are involved in planning for this, because once again, we've been starting like this five years ago, so we do have delays and we do have things that are going on. But the fact that there is this contingency that is going to help with handling some of these extra costs, I'm very grateful that that is there, and I hope that we can use that funding to get the school what we need, and I'm very grateful that it will not interfere with the Performing Arts Center. That is the next thing that is going to happen, because I know that that is also important too. But yeah, so I just wanted to thank everyone who is involved with that forethought, and because five years ago, I definitely didn't think that we were going to be dealing with the political climate that we are currently dealing with, so thank you.
Thank you. And do we have one more public comment?
Ari Newman.
Welcome.
Good evening to you, board. I come today in my personal capacity as an Elkhorn parent, not as a member of the Measure Z Bond Oversight Committee, but again, expressing similar views to my wife and Dr. Menses, just to say thank you for the foresight to ensure there was adequate contingency in this project. Thank you to the staff who were involved in that too. I know it's been a journey, but to really say how important it is that we're able to move forward with this project in a timely manner, ensure that the kids are back at their home school in Elkhorn as soon as we can get them back in the classroom, and really just to express support for moving forward with the project. And I think the kids are as excited as the teachers, maybe, if they realize it, but really looking forward to that. And yeah, just appreciate the opportunity come before you and to serve on the Oversight Committee as well, so thank you.
Thank you. Is that all of our public comments?
Yes, that is all.
Okay, all right. Thank you all for giving your evening to be here and make your voices heard. The majority of comments that we got over email were also about the waitlist, so thank you for bringing that to our attention too. Thank you. All right, that now takes us to item M, which is our public hearing. We have a public hearing for the Washington Unified School District Local Control Accountability Plan. Autry Streek, our Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services, welcome.
Good evening, trustees and superintendent, community members and staff. This evening, I am joined by our Director of Accountability and Compliance, Ms. Stephanie Groth, who is instrumental in leading our educational partners through the LCAP process, gathering input, analyzing data, and creating actions using all that input so that we have a solid plan to follow. And so, this evening, she will share some of that input, and we'll talk a little bit about what our LCAP allows us to do and take any questions that you may have. And I'm sorry, our Director of Fiscal Services, Billy Duba, is joining us as well. Next slide, please. So, again, the purpose of our presentation tonight is just to open up a public hearing for next year's LCAP for WUSD. We would like to solicit recommendations, and please go back, Melinda. And comments from the public, and all of the components of the LCAP are listed there. Next slide. And so, again, last year, Ms. Groth had the foresight to make sure that we aligned our LCAP with our strategic plan, and so how we've organized and kind of thought about our resources so that we can meet the goals that we've set out to accomplish in the strategic plan. Next slide. All right.
Good evening. First, I'd like to say I do, and we recognize that this is a very long plan, so we have, we're going to go over it in a general sense, but please know that we are always available for questions from the board, from the public, to make sure that everybody understands what goes into this plan. I live it every day, and so we know that there's a lot of education speak in it, and we want to make it accessible to everyone. So, the LCAP is a three-year plan. We are currently in our first year of that three-year plan, with next year being the second year. So, a lot of it is the same, but we really want to highlight what's different and what is in the plan for this year. The LCAP in its totality really serves three distinct purposes. It looks at that meaningful engagement. We've seen this slide before, and this is truly what the LCAP is. It's that strategic comprehensive plan, as well as it does service that accountability and compliance piece. The LCAP process The LCAP process, we share this with our educational partners and in every meeting truly starts with our students. We look at what are the successes, the progress, the identified needs. We want that input from our educational partners. We're going to talk a little bit about how we receive that later in the presentation. We look at our goals, our actions, our metrics, and then tie it to the expenditures. And we always look at how are we increasing those improved services to our unduplicated students, which are our foster youth EL and low income. Sorry. I did them out of order, so I was a little off. So it says draft on this because this is a public hearing to get that input. We will bring it back. By statute, we must adopt the LCAP when we do the budget, so we'll bring that back in two weeks. The components, the required components of the LCAP are listed there. We have our budget overview, our plan summary, a description about our engaging educational partners, our goals and actions, our increased services and action tables. Our intent tonight is truly to go over those components of the LCAP.
Hi, good evening. This slide is called the Budget Overview for Parents. This shows the revenue that the district is planning on receiving or projected to receive in the 25, 26 school year. Total revenue for the general fund for the district is projected at 126.2 million. Of that, the biggest source is the local control funding formula. We're going to get about 97.8 million. So the, the big circle on the right is the total revenue. The dark blue section is the 97.8 million in the local control funding formula. And then it goes to the right into a green circle, which shows the, the total amount of local control funding formula. And then it has the small triangle coming out of it and that's the supplemental and concentration dollars that are part of the local control funding formula. And those are the funds that are generated based on the enrollment of our unduplicated students. As Stephanie just mentioned, the foster youth English learners and low-income students. So we're anticipating 17.2 million in supplemental and concentration dollars that we will budget for those students.
When we look at the plan summary, which is the next section of the LCAP, it really takes into multiple areas, including general information. It talks about the history of our district, the geography, the enrollment, school information, and then any recent challenges. It also has an annual performance reflection where we briefly discuss the California dashboard and local data. This information is pretty much copied from the presentation that we gave during the mid-year LCAP presentation. Because remember, it's based upon the data from last end of year. And then this time, it also looks at the Learning Recovery Emergency Block Grant Funds. And that is a new requirement for funds that were not expended by this year that must be in the LCAP. As well as there's a section in the reflections about our technical assistance, or what we call for our students with disabilities. This was also presented when we did our mid-year update. And then we must identify our comprehensive support and improvement schools, which for this coming school year is Westmore Oaks Elementary. In our engaging educational partners, this is just one sample of what the template looks like. It was new last year and then it was updated. I realize it's very small on the screen in the 180-page document. It does detail the different groups that we met with as well as the process for engagement. We did have an LCAP Advisory Committee meeting. I met with departments. I had input from community schools, from our county, as well as a survey that went out, including student input as well.
And so this slide just explains what the five LCAP goals are. And again, they directly mirror our strategic plan goals. So success in the early years, making sure that we provide healthy, safe, challenged and supported environments for all of our students. Goal three, opportunity and achievement for every student. Goal four, really working to eliminate any disproportionalities that we see in our data, achievement data as well as culture and climate data. Goal number five, readiness for college career and life. And then the Equity Multiplier goal, which two of our schools have qualified for because of the transient nature of the students that they serve. And then on this slide, it just explains what our metrics and our actions are. So we have to identify how will we measure our progress? How will we know that we are on the right track towards meeting our LCAP goals? And then what are the actions that we're going to commit to implement in order to reach those metrics?
Speaking of metrics, when we look at our LCAP goals, the metric sections have been all updated. This is an example. This is the same example that we gave to you during the mid-year update where we did a mid-year update. But it's changed a little bit and you can see those peach color. Is that, I think that's what color it is. Where the year one outcome data has then been reported and then now we are actually reporting the current difference from baseline. And I think, and the board will appreciate this because that's always been a question, like, how do we know that we're making progress? And so in that description, we actually have to state for each metric now what metrics are making progress as well as what actions are successful in meeting that metric. So that is why the sections are a little bit longer and you'll see those called out within the LCAP. With the actions, this is the goal analysis that I was talking about. We do look at the overall implementation. There are some areas that you will see specifically that we may not have, you know, made that progress and we have made those changes. We're going to talk about that in the next slide. But this again is just one example of how we continue to reflect and look at what we're doing and how we utilize our funds to support our goals, all funds.
And so in reflecting on the work that we've done this school year and looking towards next school year, some of the continued actions are support for our intervention specialists and our instructional coaches. Making sure that we're providing professional learning opportunities for all WUSD staff. Continuing to provide the support and services of One Foster Youth Liaison. As well as continuing support for our newcomer classes at both our high school and one of our K eights. And continue support for positive school culture and climate. And then on the right, you see some revised or new actions. So reallocating some funds based on identified needs versus what we actually spent this current year. And an additional campus security monitor for our Yolo Alternative High School. An additional position for, to support a positive school climate at River City High School. And we've taken out one position. Our Coordinator of Student Empowerment and Leadership was previously funded using LCAP dollars, but that position no longer exists and those duties have been folded into our EDI Director position.
So the Equity Multiplier was new last year and this was one that, the slide, this is taken straight from CDE wording. And so it truly does look at providing additional funds or allocations to school sites with the prior year's non-stability rates that were greater than 25%. And so when we look at our schools that are being supported by that, we have Yolo, WUVA. And then because it's looking at data that's not from directly last year, there's also our Evergreen Opportunity. But we are working to determine how those funds can be utilized since there are currently no students there. We work with the staff to ensure that the actions are evidence-based services that are truly supporting those students to meet their goals.
And so here are some additional examples of actions that support increased services for our three unduplicated count student groups. So for our Foster Youth, sorry, Foster Youth Liaison, of course, we're continuing that. And she provides direct support for our families who are unhoused or in transition. And then targeted supports for students who are in foster care, making sure they're progressing in academics as well as from a social emotional learning perspective. And then supports for our English learners, again, staffing our newcomer classes to accommodate the unique needs of students who are new to our country. And then as well as English learner support for students who are learning English as a second language. And then our low-income students, the supports there are ensuring that everyone gets an opportunity to experience science camp or outdoor education experience. And then providing transportation to our families who need it.
There are many action tables, although there's less than last year. These, I've worked closely with Director Duba to make sure that the action tables accurately reflect the expenditures or the estimated actuals, as they call them. But these tables have been reviewed and will continue to be reviewed by our fiscal department as well as by YCOE's fiscal department. So our next steps, we are here this evening to seek additional feedback. As we know, this is a process and we want that. We will look at requesting the board approval at our next meeting. And then of course, after the approval, we will follow all guidelines, make sure that it's sent to our Yolo County Office of Education. They do continue to provide us feedback and so we will update our LCAP to reflect that. And then we will continue to implement our LCAP.
Okay, thank you. Are there any comments for this public hearing?
There are no comments.
Okay, going once, going twice. All right, then we're closing the public hearing and opening to board questions or comments.
I have a quick question. For the Equity Multiplier goal, so I'm just curious because we hear a lot about like English learners and, but for foster youth and like the low income, we're getting that from documentation that they would have submitted to you guys, right? And the extra, I guess, is it funding that we get from that? Is that what it is, the Equity Multiplier? So we get like extra, like?
So the Equity Multiplier funding is, I think, different than, so the Equity Multiplier funds go directly to support those three sites. And it is in addition to the other funding that we receive.
Okay. And I'm just curious, and I don't know if you have this data, but is that being utilized or maxim? Are you guys maximizing the use for that? Are you seeing that it's being absorbed and used?
So within that goal, we actually, there were some areas that we realized that we did not utilize it in a timely manner. Such as we were looking at, and this is in the wonderful wording in the LCAP. But we had looked at hiring paraeducators due to some staffing, trying to get people hired. We went through several rounds. So that was, they were not hired until later in the school year. So those funds were not utilized because of staffing. And then there were some other ones where we looked at utilizing more restricted funds to meet that need. So that, but these funds will carry over to support the same actions.
No, no, it does. I just, my mind just, I needed to understand that. I just, it's a great thing, grateful. So, thank you.
Can I just clarify the information on students and child welfare? Because they spent a career actually creating the MLU between Department of Social Services and Department of Education. Make sure we have the data. So it actually comes straight from the state, the counties in the state. So if they're in the system.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. I misunderstood the question. I was looking at the equity, the funding for the Equity Multiplier fund is not based upon that. That's the mobility of all students.
The first question was, do we self-report child welfare? And that's not, that is not self-reported. That is actually a data match between Department of Social Services and Department of Education that comes back down to us. Actually, goes from the county, goes to the state, overmatched and back down.
Does any coffee? Yeah. I'm not. Not in the coffee. But that's all. I don't even want to hear myself. I'm sorry. I was just going to say, because I, I, I just wanted to make sure I understood the budget overview that you had, the pretty chart. I want to, because I'm a visual, so I like this little, what's his name, Pac-Man. It looks like a Pac-Man. It's a smaller Pac-Man.
In my notes, it does say Pac-Man.
See? Okay. All right, so I want to make sure I understand. So this was the budget overview for next year based off of what we are projecting to receive. The big blue Pac-Man, light blue Pac-Man. That is what we're seeing from the, that, that one that's going out. That is kind of saying that piece, like it's breaking up that little piece, right? And this is all from the local control funding, like formula piece. And that supplemental concentration, that's all like hopes? Are those like, because it says grants, concentration grants, is that like things that we know for sure we're getting or we are hoping we get?
No, no, we're getting those funds. Those are the funds that are generated from the unduplicated student population.
Okay. I wanted to make sure I understood that part because I was like, wait, I think I missed, you guys are going so fast. And I was like, wait a minute, I missed it. That was really my one question on that piece. So thank you for clarifying. And then the LCAP metrics piece, the one with the, I think you said light peach. So on here, we have our, like, I think this is like the chronic absentee. This is like a, an example, of course. So the baseline is where we started off in the beginning of the year and I'm, I'm assuming, right?
The baseline was the baseline that we established last year.
From last year.
From last year. And so on that one, the baseline is from last year.
So was it 2024?
24.
So 2023?
It was actually from the 23 dashboard is where that information is taken. Because last year, that was the most current information that we had.
Right, because we're a year behind.
Yes.
So because we're a year behind, so that's 2023 and this year one outcome. So now this is based off of a year later.
Last year, the 24 dashboard.
And so 20, or, so this one, year one is 2024. And then year two will be this year, but we won't get that till next year?
Yes. And to confuse it, we'll bring it to you at our mid-year update.
Okay, so what I'm seeing, this current baseline, different from the baseline, is only looking at baseline to year one outcome, the difference? Unless like, so, okay. So now, help me to make sure I understand. All students 25.8 chronically absent at the baseline. Are we saying all students are only like we, 20.6 chronically absent? So it means that only 20% of our kids are now absent. So we've had a decrease in absenteeism? Okay, and that's where the all students, 5.6%. Okay, just want to make sure I'm under, my mathing is mathing. Okay, that was it. Okay, thank you. That was all. That's all my question.
Are there any other questions? No, okay. Then we are done with that. And that now takes us, thank you, to our public hearing for Washington Middle College High School Local Control Accountability Plan. Again, with Autry Streek, our Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services, and welcoming up Principal Lane.
So now this is, this item is particular to Washington Middle College because they are in dependent charter. They have to write their own LCAP separate from WUSD. But you'll see some alignment as we go through the presentation. So Principal Rachel Lane is here. She will be presenting her LCAP, her school's LCAP. And of course, Billy will give the budget overview again. So with that, we'll kind of go fast through those. So with that, we'll kind of go fast through those opening slides because they're exactly like the ones we just saw. So go ahead, Melinda, to slide. Slide seven. The next one. This one or am I doing that wrong? Okay. So like I just mentioned, because they are a charter, they have to do a separate LCAP. And that's just, this slide is just giving that, that overview and how that aligns to ed code. Next slide, please. Yep, next slide.
Hello again. Okay, similar to the district's budget overview for parents, this is set up the same way. Washington Middle College High School is anticipating two point eight million in local, or in general fund revenues. Two point five, almost two point six of that is from the local control funding formula. So most of the funding for Washington Middle College High School comes from LCFF. Of that, two point five eight million, five hundred and eight thousand is generated based on the unduplicated students of that school. So the foster youth, English learners and low income students. So all, all five hundred and eight thousand of that is budgeted in their LCAP.
And then this just, this slide just highlights some of what's included in the plan summary. So a description of what a middle college is, the history of Washington Middle College in particular, their enrollment, some additional school information, their annual performance based on the California dashboard. And then those last two bullets don't apply to middle college, but they're just standard components of the plan summary. So for our engaging our educational partners, we partner with Sacramento City College, but we also for our charter have an advisory committee. And that includes Sacramento City College as well as parents, staff, both classified and certificated and students and myself. That's where we discuss components of our needs and review data and so forth in order to create our plan. We, this is our, this is also our first year implementation of our new LCAP. When I started, I was in the middle of an LCAP, so this has really been created around the actions and interventions that we need to have at Washington Middle College. And it's going really well, so I don't see any changes in the next couple of years. We also try to align our, our goals and to the strategic plan of the district where it was applicable. The way, our first goal is college-focused academic program readiness for college career and life. Goal two, equitable and positive educational environment, whole child, healthy, safe, challenged and supported. And goal three, our parent and community engagement, an opportunity and achievement for every student. So some of the metrics that we use are high school graduation rate and also like associate of arts degrees that are obtained. And I'm going to go over a couple more that I have in there when we're looking at our outcomes. And then our actions also are to support our students and our, and our goals. And so here's just an example of one of them, but I'll just go ahead and talk about goal one, our college and focused academic program and readiness for college career and life. Some of our actions that we have in place is our high school counselor. We have our youth outreach specialist. We have transportation in order to provide our students busing to the West Sacramento Annex for more in-person classes. By doing that, we also saw an increase in our college passage rate due to being in person. And then we also, the Sacramento City College, because they're our partner, we get a lot of support from them, including a college counselor that is, that comes to our campus and supports our students with early intervention for struggling students at the college and as well as creating academic plans. We also provide tutoring, that's another action. We have curriculum support classes, math lab, summer enrichment. And we, and then our action two point two is that allows for our certificated staff to have those flexible schedules and buyout since we are a small staff. We also have Abbott schoolwide. And the results of all of these actions that we put into place and the funding towards it, we have seen a higher passage rate over both our high school and college classes. And just to get, kind of, give you an idea of, that you kind of don't see on California dashboard, is that our, a handful of our students received below a C in their college credits this year. I mean, literally a handful. And in the past, we saw more students have like Ds and Fs. We also, out of all of our integrated math one, two and three, and so this was freshman, sophomore and junior math, we only have sixteen students right now that need to recover, that did not get a C or B. We also had our ELA nine through twelve, only four need to recover. Our students passed history and government econ, ten through twelve, no Ds or Fs. And only about five students need to recover bio and chem. And then our, our metric outcomes, we maintained our one hundred percent graduation rate for the last three years and one hundred percent being A through G eligible. One hundred percent of our ELS also passed their LCAP and were reclassified this year. Eight associate degrees and three IGESI certifications were earned by our graduating senior class. Seven students passed the biliteracy exam and received their sale of biliteracy. And due to our standards-based grading system, in combination with our rigorous academic program, it, it ensures our students are college and career ready and it prepares them for their rigorous four-year program. We are confident that when they leave us, they're, they will be prepared. And then our goal two, the equitable and positive educational environment. Some of the things that we put in place there is, again, the flexible schedules for our certificated staff. That's two point two, two point four youth outreach to improve our attendance and two point five is the Abbott college visits. Each of our grade levels go to one college each semester. And so we also, we give them the full college experience, including visitation of dorms and also the dining halls, which they really love. And so we're really trying to encourage that higher learning. Then goal three, our parent and community engagement opportunities. We, we've continued our recruitment practices, that was three point two. And throughout the community, and we've increased our enrollment from this year, one seventy-five to a projected two hundred and twenty for next year. Also, we, the college transportation is in there as well for the in-person classes and college field trips. And then, let's see, was there another slide? Okay, yes, so we're doing all that. And next. Okay, and then I also just wanted to kind of close with some, a statement from, that was posted on the NCUS America's Best Schools Award winner page, and it was regarding Washington Middle College. And it, like, when I read this, I was like, well, this is, this tells us that what we're doing, we're on the right track. And this is the, an excerpt from the reviewers when they came to our school. It says, "Over eighty-five percent of students at Washington Middle College High School meet state standards in English compared to forty-seven percent across the state of California. Over seventy-six percent of Washington Middle College students meet state standards in science compared to thirty percent statewide. These results might seem surprising considering the school is a public high school that does not use a selective admission criteria. And eighty percent of the students meet low-income criteria. The explanation is less surprising when one considers how the school has been structured in to ensure students are likely to experience academic success. At Washington Middle College High School, all students experience a high level of academic rigor. All the courses meet the state's requirements for admission to California State University or University of California campuses. California's A through G requirement. Furthermore, Washington Middle College students begin taking, begin taking college courses at the local community college, community college in ninth grade. The high levels of rigor, however, are paired with a high level of academic support for every student. Small curriculum support classes, advancement via individual determination, which is Abbott, resources, peer tutoring and tutoring from teachers outside of the school hours combine to create a web of support that helps students succeed in both high school and community college courses. Additionally, it is important to note that Washington Middle College students successfully meet rigorous expectations because of the quality of everyday instruction in the classroom. NCUS observers noted that almost every classroom at Washington Middle College provided a warm and caring environment that led students to feel that teachers believed in their abilities to succeed academically. Students were frequently engaged in meaningful learning activity aligned to specific academic objectives and intended to help students master challenging academic concepts. Washington Middle College is a small school that is making a big impact on the students it serves." Any questions?
First, we're going to open it up to the public to see if there's any public comments during this public hearing.
There were no public comments.
Okay, then we're going to close the public hearing and then we're going to open it up to board colleagues. Does anyone have any questions on the LCAP plan? Okay, you can make a comment too.
I just wanted to say I too enjoy a great cafe, so I'd like that. But I'm, I actually, my brother and my niece just got back from Costa Rica. So it was like a little jealous, because I, my brother asked me to go, but I couldn't get away from work that, you know, late notice. But that was like, to see the pictures on social media was, that was awesome. And just an observation, I guess, is of what I've noticed, it's, it's, I know it's a smaller campus, you know, there's not like River City or, you know, the bigger campus, but I, I feel like I've noticed the community, the parents, the families, even if it's just a guardian, they're really involved in, in their students' progress. And I think, it's just, it gives me hope and, and I hope we continue to, to do that. And, you know, it just, I like that and I'm just sharing that I've observed that. So thank you to the staff for everything that they do too, so.
Okay, all right, well, your LCAP looks great, thank you. All right, that now takes us to our public hearing number three, Public Hearing for Washington Unified School District, twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six adopted budget, and that is with Monique Sovar, our Chief Business Officer.
Good evening. I'm here with our Director of Fiscal Services, Billy Duba, to present our proposed budget for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. An important component of this is it also includes our estimated actual expenses for this year, which is the foundation for our budget for next. Next slide. So there are, there's a little path that we're going through today. We'll share the legal requirements, our core messages, a budget summary, a look at the future years with our multi-year projection, and then we'll summarize our next steps for you. Because our budget pays for all things to be able to support students, it is in alignment with all aspects of our strategic plan. Next slide. And of course, our strategic map and our twelve strategic priorities. As shared with all budget presentations, we share our annual budget cycle. And it, we are at the adopted budget in June, and it appears as if it's at the end, but it's all cyclical. And so we'll keep basically on this circle so that we can continue to monitor our budget and meet those budget points throughout the year. So with the legal requirements, as shared just a moment ago, we are supposed to have our estimated actuals, which is our estimate, estimation of our revenues and our expenses for the twenty-five, excuse me, the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. And then, of course, we have to project our budget for next year. This is a two-step process. So tonight is a public hearing, there's no direction asked, no action asked, I should say. And then we'll be back on June twenty-sixth for your approval. So core messages with this budget, next slide. So there are key budget assumptions and considerations within the budget and the multi-year projections. The first is that it's based upon the governor's May revision budget, which includes a change to the cost of living adjustment that the governor proposed in January. In January, we were expecting a two point four three percent COLA, and that was in our second interim report. At this time, we anticipate a two point three percent COLA. The twenty-five, twenty-six budget in the estimated actuals shows an improvement to this year's budget, which sets us up for a good foundation for the next budget. In twenty-six, twenty-seven, there is a reduction of expenses of about one point five million. That's due to expiring grants, specifically the arts, music and music and instructional materials discretionary block grant and our educator effectiveness grant. Those were one-time funds that we received, and we have been using them to help support those COVID-funded personnel and non-personal expenses because the COVID funds expired earlier this year. And then, of course, there's state and federal uncertainties. Earlier this year, some of our public comment, not this year, this evening, some of the public comment talked about uncertainties. And there are uncertainties within the budget because the economy is kind of in flux right now. Next slide. We always want to talk about enrollment projections. A lot of the state of California districts have declining enrollment. Our enrollment over the last few years has been what I would characterize as fairly steady. Next year, we do anticipate an increase of about fifty-three students. And after that, we do see a little bit of a decline. But over the next few years, when compared to this year, we're seeing an increase of four students, and so I characterize that as fairly steady. Next slide. But we're funded on the number of students who attend school every single day, called our average daily attendance. Our average daily attendance is about ninety-three percent. Specifically, about ninety-three point eight percent of our students attend school every day. And the way the funding works is we're funded on the higher of the current year ADA, the prior year ADA, or three-year average ADA. And that's called our funded ADA. Because that average is higher or the amount is higher than our actual ADA, we're funded at a higher amount. So if we were to look at the slide in blue, that's our actual ADA. The yellow is our funded ADA. And so you can see, we're protected against declining enrollment or declining ADA. That's something the state has set up for dishes. Next slide. So now I'm going to pass it to Billy, and Billy will provide a summary of the twenty-five, twenty-six budget.
Thank you. Okay, a couple key budget factors when making the budget for twenty-five, twenty-six. Our revenues, as Monique just mentioned a couple slides ago, reflect a two point three percent COLA, down from the two point four three in January. There's no new one-time revenue included in this budget. Our expenses, we are not including any anticipated employee compensation increases. And we did add the discretionary block grant budget purchase two buses. In the other category, we have a commitment on the budget of seven hundred thousand from the LCAP from the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Those are funds that were budgeted for instructional materials that we need to use next year for the ELA adoption of curriculum. Projected revenues for twenty-five, twenty-six combined. So this, this slide has a column for description, unrestricted budget, restricted budget, and then combined. The combined column are those same numbers that I shared with the LCAP budget overview for parents for the district. The local control funding formula is the ninety-seven point, almost eight million dollars. Combined total revenue for the district for next year is coming in at one hundred and twenty-six point two million dollars. For our projected expenses for next year, this one is set up the same way. We have a description column, unrestricted, restricted, and then combined. Our total salaries and benefits district for the general fund, unrestricted and restricted combined is a hundred and one point five million. That includes classified, certificated and statutory benefits. Our total operating costs for next year are projected to be thirty-two point one million general fund combined, and that includes our books and supplies, services, operating expenditures, special services, capital outlay, any construction that's general funded. Gives us a total expenses of a hundred and thirty-three point six, almost point seven million dollars. Now we take the, the totals from those last few slides, we have the total revenue, the total expenses, and then we have a difference between what we're receiving and what we're spending. The unrestricted budget is receiving sixteen point one million dollars more. The unrestricted budget is receiving $16.1 million more than it's spending. The restricted budget is spending 23.5 more than it's receiving. So our combined change, revenue versus expenditures is 7.5, 7.45 million dollars. The total financing sources and uses of that row represents the contribution that we make from the unrestricted budget to the restricted budget to pay for programs like our special education and our restricted routine maintenance. Which gives us a total net combined decrease of fund balance for next year of 7.2 million dollars. This shows the fund balance, so the first row on there, the beginning, beginning fund balance, that's where our estimated actuals are projected to end for the 24-25 school year. By the end of this June, we anticipate having a combined $31.7 million fund balance. And then we apply the change from the last slide, the decrease in the fund balance, to that beginning balance to get a new ending fund balance for next year. So by the end of June of 2026, we are projecting that our budget will end with a $24.5 million combined balance. Underneath the ending fund balance row, the rows in white are what we call the components of ending fund balance. So in the restricted column, we have non-spendable of 25,000, that's just cash we have in the bank that we use for necessary spending. Then we have the reserve for economic uncertainties, which is 6%, and that comes over just, just over $8 million. And then we have 6.95 million dollars in an unassigned fund balance for the unrestricted budget. Next, we have multi-year projections. These are projections we're required to make, they will change, they change constantly. They're as accurate as they can be right now, tomorrow it'll be different. So this is just on the unrestricted side of our budget. We have the description column, then we have a column for the estimated actuals, which is the year we're currently in. 25-26 column represents the numbers that I just shared with you all. And then we have three future years projected out. We like to go to the, the bottom of this, where we show the ending fund balance percent. That's the percent that we like to have above 3% to be complying with California state law and over 6% to meet the board's policy. Our reserve for economic uncertainty, 6% of the ending fund balance comes out to just over $8 million for 25-26, and that is almost enough to cover one month of personnel costs. The next steps. Next step, we're here tonight for the public hearing for the budget for 25-26. We'll be back in two weeks to request the adoption of the budget. We'll continue analyzing the governor's changes to the California state budget. We'll close the fiscal year in August, late August, and we're going to continue aligning our expenses with our revenues.
Okay, are there any public comments?
No public comments.
Okay, then we're going to close the public hearing and open it up to my board colleagues. Are there any comments or questions? Yes, okay.
Castro. These figures, are they taken into account of any of the negotiation that we've been doing for either labor union?
No, we have not included any of the proposed or negotiated increases at this.
We almost have a budget deal signed, any idea, because we will always adopt this, something gets signed, and so can you give the board an idea of the impact of potential current budget when the governor signs it? So up, down, sideways. It's just, it's a normal process, right? Like we adopt a budget, then we have to revise it because. Absolutely, so I think it was in January, February, we had a budget study session, and I outlined, you know, the process that the governor and the legislature go through in identifying the budget. And as Trustee Wong was saying, a budget deal is looming. We have to have a state budget by July 1. We do have some information about what that might look like. For example, some of the TK funding may be coming our way. But we don't include that in the budget yet because until we actually see it and feel it and know that it's enacted, we don't include it in the budget. And so it's always this strange process where we're working off of, as I said on a couple slides, assumptions. We assume that this is going to occur. However, should something very significantly occur when the state budget is adopted in July, then we will come back to you to be able to share that if it is a significant impact to our budget.
Okay, you have a question? No? Okay, all right. Last call for questions. Okay, all right, that's okay.
Okay, so I'm looking at, I don't even know which one I'm looking at right now. I'm seeing that we have our projected revenue, we're at 1, 126.25 mil, slide 13. Sorry. And so we, this is what we're bringing in, that's our revenue. The next one is our expenses. I'm really trying to follow along here, and it's saying that our expenses are 133.7 million. We are definitely overspending, right? And then the next slide, changes to the fund balance. We're saying that we're going to have less, help me to make sure I understand this. We are going to have 7.2, 2.23 million dollars less than from what our projected revenues from slide 13. All right, so I am following along. And then.
Let me show slide 13.
And this is how much we're overspending, the seven mil.
Can you go to slide 13?
15.
15? Well, you're looking at slide 13 and then slide 14?
So slide 13 is how much we're bringing in. Slide 14 is how much we're spending. Slide 15 is how much we're over.
Yes. May I pause on slide 15?
Sure.
So what is important also about slide 15, that of total financing and sources, what's significant about that section is it adds to our expenses. For example, that is our special education contribution from our general fund to be able to support those services, and then also some contribution for maintenance, et cetera. And so, yes, our expenses are 133.7 million, and then we also have additional expenses. And so I just want to make sure it's clear if you're seeing any discrepancies. So that we are deficit spending.
That is all I'm trying to get at, so we're deficit spending. And so now, the following slide, 16. This was the one that I was having a hard time, hard time following. So we have this beginning fund balance of 18, of 18 mil, and the ending fund balance of 14.9. You emphasize at the very beginning, or not beginning, but like at the end of 2025-2026, the fund balance is projected to be 14.99 million. Is that an increase, a surplus, a deficit? I think that's where I'm slightly confused because I, I was trying to follow along because you were saying these are coming from our previous slides. But I don't know where from the previous slides because none of those numbers look like they came from those previous slides for me, so help me to understand.
Sure.
So the. Thank you.
The row on here that says beginning fund balance, that's how we're going to end this year.
That's how we're going to end this year.
This June, in a couple weeks, that's, that's where we're going to finish. And then we.
So that's how much we have in the bank?
Yes.
Even though we're deficit spending?
That's how much we're going to have in the bank in two weeks, in June 30th, at the end of this year. And then July 1st starts the new budget, which is where we're projecting that change from slide 15. So the 3.1 million in unrestricted, that's how you go from the 18.1 million ending this year to the 14.9 million ending next year.
Show me that again.
So slide 15, so the bottom row here, that's going to be the change in our fund balance for next year. Okay? The decrease.
So the 3.112?
Yeah, for unrestricted, combined is the 7.2 million. So next year, we're planning on deficit spending by a total of 7.2 million combined, 3.1 million in unrestricted. Now, if you go to slide 16, the 18 million, the 13.6 million, and the 31.7 million, that's how we're going to start next year. And then we're going to end up decreasing next year by that change in the fund balance.
Okay, so that's what we have in our bank, that's what I didn't understand.
Yes.
So that's what we have in our bank. With the deficit spending that we have and what's coming in, that is what we'll be left with?
Yes.
Okay, so then, I thank you for being so patient. So then, go to slide 19. An end funding balance, this highlighted green portion, that's the part where we want to be over the 6%.
Yeah.
So even though we're deficit spending and we're getting money, we're still well over.
We are, but as you see, it's going down.
Yes, I see that, it's going down. I mean, I know we're going to lose money in our bank account, I just want to make sure I'm understanding the flow because it was, for me, it was getting lost in translation.
So here you'll see the same numbers from slide 16 as well, the beginning fund balance, ending fund balance. It's the 29 to the 18, that's where we started, and then we go to 14.8.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, thank you so very much for slowing it down for me. That was it.
Can I just point to clarification because it just, so this does not include any potential subtle negotiations that we have ongoing right now. And also, just because I, I know it's been publicly said, the fund balance includes all the funds, right? Even the, the one-time, what do we call them? Fund? The, not, the, um, oh my gosh, I'm drawing a Fund 40, fun, like the. Fund 17, right, correct. The, the fund balance does not include.
This is just Fund 1.
Oh, this is general fund, sorry, not, okay, Fund 1. Just for transparency.
Are you ready? Okay. Thank you, then we are going to move on from our public hearing to our only information discussion I've had this evening. We have Sacramento Valley Charter School Annual Update Presentation with Autry Srik, our Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services. Welcome.
Good evening again. I am joined by Principal and Chief Business Official for SAC Valley Charter School, Dr. Vendetta Dozier-Brown and her team, which she will introduce. And this is an information item in accordance with Ed Code Section 47606.5 because we are the authorizing agent for SAC Valley Charter. This is their annual report to the Board of Education. And so with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Dozier-Brown.
Thank you. So good evening to the Honorable President Gonzalez and Superintendent Hildreth, and the rest of board members. Greeting from Sacramento Valley Charter School. I am Dr. Vendetta Dozier-Brown, Chief Business Official and Principal, and I'm joined by Mr. Sidhu, who is the Technology Coordinator, and Mr. Singh, who is our Secretary. And wonderful part of our staff, I might add. So with that, I'm going to present to you our 23-24 data review. I've been at Sacramento Valley Charter School since September 3rd, 2024. So much of what I'm giving to you is data that I've collected from that time. And our mission is stated here to create an inspiring and challenging learning environment for our children, promoting a culture of strong social and, and family values, strong community support, safe compassionate learning environment, and highly professional staff. We're located, for those of you who don't know, at 2399 Sellers Way in West Sacramento. We opened our doors to 100 students on August 22nd, 2011. It's the only school in the United States and actually North America offering core classes in Punjabi language and culture, it's part of our core curriculum. Students receive daily Punjabi language instruction from Punjabi fluent teachers, each of whom holds a California World Language's teaching credential. In addition, our scholars receive instruction in the other core subjects. Our after-school program is very robust with robotics, competitive sports, and other academic programs. As of 23-24, our enrollment was 371 pupils in TK through grade eight. This is our student enrollment by grade, which you can see. And by student group, this is, we have female, male, American, Indian native, Alaska native, Asian, Black, and African American, Filipino, Hispanic and Latino, Native Hawaiian or Pacific Islander, two or more races, white English learners, socio-economically disadvantaged students, and students with disabilities. And you can see from that slide that our highest demographic is comprised of Asian students. Our ELA CAS results, we've done very, very well. Although last year, there was a decline of 11.3 points, 280 students were tested. I might add that we were recovering from some of the COVID effects, so that could have been part of it, and also a lot of new teachers. The same thing with math, we are above standard by 17.2 points. There was a decline of 17.3 points by most likely the same reason. For science, we are 5.1 points below standard. There was no colored data available on the website for this. I don't think they published any, any data in color for science. Chronic absenteeism is 15%. There was a decline by 3.1%. And there were 381 students that helped comprise this, this data. Chronic absenteeism yearly comparison, Sacramento Valley Charter School in the state of California, you can see that there is, was a decline in chronic absenteeism, so that's great for both SAC Valley and California. The suspension rate declined by 1%, but we are still in the green area, meaning that is acceptable. Well, no suspensions are acceptable, but we do the best we can there. Suspension rate yearly comparisons SAC Valley and California, you can see that we are doing slightly, slightly better, 1.2%. English learner progress, we're doing very, very well. We have an ELD teacher and, who pulls students out, and our students are doing very, very well. As you can see, we're not even in the green there, we're in the blue. So quite a few students are reclassified every year. And this is, this shows you a comparison also with California. Our standards met and making progress are quite high, and so we're very proud of that. This is some additional school dashboard data. These were the basics, instruction and materials and facilities, our climate survey, parent and family engagement, and access to a broad course of study. We're all, we all met standard there. This is a summary of the, of the data that I just presented. This shows our number of students, 63.85% met or exceeded standard in ELA, 51.77 met or exceeded in math, 44, sorry about that, should be a percentage, met or exceeded standard in science, and 75.7 made progress as English learners, 15% chronic absenteeism, and 3% suspension rate. And you can see the comparison with California, which we've exceeded in pretty much every metric. So our, our targeted areas for growth and improvement. So our targeted areas for growth and improvement, the first one is to reduce chronic absenteeism. So as you know, we have a large Asian population and. One of the things that happens is there are a lot of weddings that occur in the spring and. Parents had been taking their their students out of school for extended periods of time and that that really. Contributed to the chronic absenteeism and we are doing something about that. So one of the things that we've done is we've reduced the number of days that students can be out for independent study. I think it, I don't even know if there was a limit before. So now it's five days, which is reflective of the rest of the state of California. And we're really, really strict. If you're out three consecutive days without notifying us or having a valid reason, you're dropped. So just like the rest of the public schools. So we are, I I came from a background, I worked as an administrator in Stockton Unified for about almost twenty years and so. Just bringing back some of those standards and and. Kind of introducing them at our school site is one way that we intend to really attack that and we have already. Active recruitment of diverse student groups, refurbishment and update of the school website has been positive and Mr. Sidhu is taking the lead on that and it's going to, I believe, attract a lot more families. And then we also are featured on other platforms such as niche, Facebook, LinkedIn and others. Improved parent attendance at a Title One parent meeting, parent meetings. I feel like that's one area that I, as an administrator, really want to improve in. And so we're going, we're working on different incentives to get more parents at our meetings that have been present. Enhanced, oh, sorry about the typo, enhanced new teacher onboarding and professional development. So I don't think in the past there was a new teacher orientation would have, which maybe contributed to the turnover. Because new teachers do need the support. So we're doing that this summer. I have a guest speaker coming and and I'm going to do it myself as I was an instructional coach before. So we're going to. Have enhanced onboarding for new teachers, which I think is going to really make a difference and also giving them time to set up their classroom and do some other things. Hiring an instructional coach is a very, very big priority. Improving upon the PLC model, that's the professional learning communities. We are going to the conference in, next week actually. In Las Vegas and we are going, I'm taking my part of my leadership team and so we're going to bring back strategies to enhance our PLC model. We are providing teacher release time for professional development next year as well. To reduce suspensions, we are really working really hard on improving the SST process. And our counselor is developing new strategies for that new, a kind of a completely new structure for our SST process, which I think. Will help us identify problems at the beginning and make recommendations and and help our students succeed. Social emotional learning curriculum, the counselor is also taking the lead on that, as is our school psychologist. And then enhanced extracurricular activities. We have a lot of, lot of activities going on. Even our summer program is, we took it up a notch with STEAM and some. Some field trips that will really enhance their educational experience and also we have purchased a brand new curriculum for the summer. We're going to. And and also back to teacher professional development. We had a curriculum for ELA, Science and Social Studies that was, one grade had one publisher, another grade had a different publisher and so. This year we're purchase, we're purchasing a brand new curriculum from McGraw Hill for ELA, Science and Social Studies. And we intend to implement that with fidelity. And I don't know if my colleagues had anything to add. Did you have anything to add? He says no. Okay, so that's our presentation tonight. If there are any questions, you're free to ask us whatever you'd like to ask.
Thank you. Are there any public comments?
No public comments.
Okay, then we'll open it up to my board colleagues. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Okay.
I really like that you're going to be speaking to your, for the new teachers, for the onboarding. I think that's really important to have, you know, your admin also be present and be that face. You said that you're working on providing teachers release time for professional development. Is that something that you haven't been doing in the past and are starting to do now?
So then there's since September third, I'll have to ask my colleagues if that was the practice before.
Professional development would tend to happen onsite. Oftentimes at the beginning of the year, we were required to have it through so many hours throughout the year. Oftentimes due to scheduling errors or miscommunication, sometimes things would happen at the beginning of the year and then we would try and shoehorn things towards the end of the year.
Okay.
For professional development.
So this professional development, you're gonna try it? I I'm kind of trying to figure out what exactly is the. Yeah, what what is going to be different this time than what has in the past?
So one of the things is I did this year is I gave some of the new teachers release time to go to other school sites. Particularly the one I was most familiar with was Stockton Unified and I knew very strong, of some very strong teachers in that district. So I sent them there to observe and bring back ideas and one of them, sorry, TK teacher, really, really, I I don't know if she got it just from there or not, but she really took off. She's brand new. And the other, and and so we're, I would like to do more of that this year to give teachers opportunities. There are some other teacher, a couple of other ones who are struggling. That I sent to another school in Washington Unified, actually, and that was the school we visited, Bridge, Bridge, Bridgeway. Yeah, so we went over there. So. Just making sure that we have, I'm using for our new teacher orientation, Dr. Harry Wong's book. And which is to me like a standard Bible. And so we're going to start with that and then I have, because I came from Fortune University, not Fortune University, Fortune School of Education, sorry. Prior to coming here, I worked in the teacher education program, so I'm bringing one of my colleagues over, a former colleagues over to help with that onboarding. So. So we're gonna get it done.
All right. And then my last question that I have for the enhanced extracurricular activities. But it was something you said in there was about the curriculum.
Oh, yeah.
So with the curriculum, you mentioned that one grade level had a different, I don't know, publisher compared to another one. Was it specifically all? The diff, like English or was it just your science and social studies?
It was, it was ELA, math was consistent, but nothing else was really consistent.
So are you working towards making them all consistent?
They're all going to have the same exact curriculum so that we have continuity from TK through eighth grade.
So the first ones that will be is science and social studies and then ELA?
No, there were, we purchased all of it.
Oh, you already purchased all of it? Okay.
Yes, it's on its way.
All right. Just wanted to make sure. That was it.
Yeah.
Okay, are there any other questions or comments? Okay, I, you have some? Okay, I know that you've had a lot of turnover as you spoke to with your staff as well. And I'm wondering about your board also and if you have any current board members who are residents of West Sacramento.
That I don't know. I don't know where they live. Sorry.
So maybe you can follow up them with us and and just let us know over email.
I can ask my colleagues if you know.
Mr. Singh knows. Yes, good evening, Honorable Board. Definitely what you were saying, Dr. Gonzalez, we can definitely get back to you. We'd have to ask the current sitting five board members. I think at least one of them do now live in West Sacramento and then the others in the surrounding areas.
Thank you. And then I, the responsibility of our board is to provide oversight as we've done more than just at this annual meeting, which we appreciate you being here and sharing. Thank you. And as you know, when you came in, there were many, many concerns, pretty serious concerns and which I think has also led to a lot of the turnover you've had and. And so, Dr. Dozier Brown, I just want to thank you for sharing some of the ways that you're going to help address some of those pieces that we have heard about. And heard her concerns about and we, our staff continues, you know, to do that oversight, but I I want to thank you for for sharing with us.
You're very welcome.
Did you have anything else?
Okay. I mean, that's the question, but again, related to just turnover, we know that there was a lot of school climate, general just feelings and just wanting to know like with with you coming in, new leadership. How that's been going generally because we've heard.
Yeah, so.
You know, just.
Yeah, so one, so one of the things that I learned very quickly, because I'm from the East Coast and the East Coast, on the East Coast. The the leadership style was to be more authoritative. And I quickly learned when I became a principal that that is not the way to lead. And so one of the thing, and you know, I had to learn by trial and error and that I thought this doesn't work. So when I came to SAC Valley, I was determined to turn that leadership model around and make. And make our environment more collaborative all the way around. So for example. There was no leadership team. I don't think there had ever been a leadership team at all. And so we have a leadership team. I think there are maybe twelve credentialed staff on the leadership team from our ELD specialist to psychologists is on the team, our counselor, in addition to teachers. In my opinion, that has made a tremendous difference because, and it's a huge help to me and a weight off of my shoulders. And so, for example. This year we did, and along with our support, classified support staff, we did an instructional calendar and. I don't think that had ever been done before. I think it had been just one person pretty much doing that. And they were delighted to say, these are the times we want to have off. These are the times we want to have professional development. These are the times we want to have minimum days for PLC and that had never happened before. And other projects they're working on, they're gonna help me work on the LCAP and just everything that. I can think of to give them. And so we get to the meetings and they start chattering and I tell them, guys, we've got to get this done. Let's refocus because, you know, they all like each other. We get along. But we're focusing on the next thing that we're going to do. So we're gonna focus on, I haven't asked them yet either a three or five year strategic plan and what they'd like to see. And and so I I think that that has really, hopefully, I don't know because I haven't asked people specifically, but I hope that that has improved climate. As far as our support staff, same thing when we meet, I ask, we, when we have our office meetings, our support meetings. Everybody's name is listed and I hear from everybody on the team, what they think, think and what they're, what they've been doing, what they think about some of the policies and I always, especially these two, always ask them. So hopefully it has improved. Hopefully it has. We, this year, only one teacher isn't coming back on that person's own volition, but she's having a baby and she's staying home with her, her child. So.
That's, that's great news.
So so that has, that has been positive. Yes.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. Very nice to meet all of you. Thank you.
Okay, that now takes us to the consent agenda. Are there any changes to the consent agenda? Okay, and can I have a motion to approve?
I move.
Okay, move by Trustee Wong, second by Vice President Coffey. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye to vote aye. Dr. Hildreth?
Yes, and so before we move forward, I do want to acknowledge now that the consent agenda has been approved, that we have a new principal. For Riverbank who happens to be here this evening. So we're going to ask new principal, Ms. Kate, Katie Rodriguez. To come and just gonna share a little bit about Ms. Rodriguez. She's joining us after serving as a principal at a dual immersion school within SAC City Unified. And while there, she distinguished herself through instructional leadership, meaningful community engagement and a steadfast commitment to cultural responsiveness. Prior to that role, Ms. Rodriguez served as an assistant principal, supporting school-wide initiatives and leading collaborative leadership teams. She's taught in moderate to severe special day classes, served as a kindergarten and a first grade teacher. And we look forward to working together to usher in this new chapter at Riverbank. So welcome and we're so happy to have you join the Washington Unified.
Thank you so much. Oh, can I talk? Okay, cool.
It's long, I feel like you.
Thank you so much. Good evening, board members. I'm really excited, excuse me, about this opportunity. We had my field day today, so I'm very tired. And I'm coming here after sadly leaving my students, but it's because the school closed and I'm really excited about this new chapter. I bring, as you said, a background in early learning, special education and a deep commitment to making sure that every child has what they need to succeed. Not just academically, but socially and emotionally as well. At the heart of everything that I do is relationships. I truly believe that when we take the time to build real trusting relationships and connections with students, families and staff, that we will create a school culture where everyone can thrive. This is especially true for our middle school students who need to feel, to need, who need to feel seen and understood in order to stay motivated and on track. I'm excited to be the that consistent presence for them, helping them navigate these pivotal years with confidence and support. I also really look forward to partnering with our families and building our community together at Riverbank. Together we'll create a school where our scholars are not only learning, but growing in every single way. I really want to thank you again for this opportunity. I'm very excited. I can't wait to get started. Thank you again. Yes. Thank you.
I just want to say, go Otters. So I'll be there sometime soon and we will talk and you get to know me because I will be there, but you might not see me until you actually see me. You're like, wait, she's here. Because I am on that campus pretty often.
Okay. Yes, you'll get to know us all, but one is a parent at your school, so you'll definitely get to meet her. And is this your mom who stayed this evening with you?
Mom.
Yep, moms make the world go around. Thank you for being here and giving your evening to be here to support your daughter and I hope you get a little bit of a nice break in summer as we get ready to get started for a great school year. Thank you. Okay, yes. All right, and you can go. Go have some dinner or something, you know?
I don't know.
All right, that now takes us down to our action items. So we have our amendment number one. XL Construction Contract to Include Guaranteed Maximum Price for the Elkhorn Village Modernization Project Construction.
Good evening. We are here together with our facilities project analysts from our facilities department, Daniel Gondora. To share with you information about the guaranteed maximum price for the Elkhorn Modernization Project. So what is a guaranteed maximum price? It is the guaranteed max price for construction for the project. It comes about through design and bidding and what's called value engineering to make sure that we are getting the best price as possible. So a little background about this particular project. So our Elkhorn Modernization Project, back in August, you approved a contract with a company called XL Construction. XL Construction also did our Westfield project and is doing this project and brings a wealth of information and lessons from the previous project. In April, you approved the design for the project and then XL Construction started getting bids from contractors to determine what that construction cost would be. Unfortunately, that cost came in higher than what we were expecting in March, which was the last time that we looked at costs. Came up a little over four million dollars higher than anticipated. Why? Why? Market volatility. As we all know, and I mentioned in the budget presentation, there's a lot of global and national factors moving and changing. Also tariffs, steel tariffs went into account, and so that may also be affecting some of the costs that we're seeing. And so, with the $4 million increase, how does that affect us? Where would we get the money from? Within the Elkhorn, excuse me, within the Measure Z total budget, there's what's called a program reserve. And that program reserve is intended to be able to support any of our three projects. Should there be an overrun, should there, something unexpected like this occur, that we need to be able to support the project in order to move forward? And that reserve is a little over $7 million. And so, what we are proposing is to use some of the $7 million, $4 million of the $7 million, to be able to increase the total budget, the, excuse me, the construction budget for the Elkhorn Modernization Project. What that would do to our future projects? We still get to continue as planned with our $38 million for our Performing Arts Center. Right now, in our total Measure Z budget, we have about $110 million available for both projects. Both projects with Elkhorn, even with the extra $4 million, total about $106 million. So, we have $110 million available for our projects. Our projects are totaling, based upon the information we have now, based upon the conditions that we know of right now, $106 million. So, that leaves a little bit of cushion for future projects or future expenses. It's also important to note that earlier, we talked about money in the bank with our reserves. But we also know that we have Measure Z dollars in a bank account, and when we have money in a bank account, we're earning interest. And so, we are earning interest on the money in the budget, and that goes directly back into the Measure Z total budget that can support future projects. We're also looking at other ways to save. On a next agenda item, we're recommending that we donate some portables. And by donating portables, that again decreases our expenses on the budget. So, let's talk about the timeline. The design was approved in April, and XL Construction went out to bid, and here we are in June. Not so late in June, but a little bit later than we would have wanted to be able to come with the, the GMP. We had to take time to, you know, refine the design, and then also do some value engineering. The 14-month construction timeline is still the same, but that takes us into July, late July of '26. And that's what's called substantial completion. So, that means technically, the building is ready to occupy, and then we have closeout. But we know that with the Elkhorn Modernization Project, it's a much larger scope. We have more construction than the 14-month timeline we had with Westfield. We also know that we are starting school earlier than we have in many years. We're starting August 5. So, a July 29, construction completion, and an August 5 move-in date, it doesn't really align with us being really confident that we'll be able to ensure that everything is complete for our students and our staff to return, that we have every cabinet, every chair, every blind, every, every rug, everything that we need to be able to support our students. And so, with the timeline, we propose a move-in date after the winter break, because moving students in in September or October just really isn't ideal. Our goal is always to try to complete before August, and be able to move in in the summer. But we definitely want it to bring to you now to say, you know, we really want to be cautious, and plan for the July 20, I'm sorry, not July, January 2027 move-in.
But it is a bigger project. Westfield had four, three new buildings, and Elkhorn seven. So, project is bigger. That leaves a lot of timeline.
Okay, are there any public comments?
We do have one.
Okay.
Dr. Amelia, Malia.
Curzer? Okay, welcome.
Hello, I'm back. You're not rid of me yet. Good evening, dedicated school board. Oh, I remember this. There we go. I would like to make a comment in support of increasing the proposed budget for the construction contract for Elkhorn Village. As we all do, I lament that so many factors have contributed to increased costs for the construction of our school needs. Nevertheless, given the amount of planning that has already gone into the current construction plans, the extensive cost reduction measures that have already been taken, and the already delayed finish date of the school, I urge you to approve this increased expenditure. We have no guarantee that future construction costs will not be affected by other such market volatility in the future. And not approving this added expenditure would mean needing to cut some of the planned buildings or improvements to the school, which the school needs, all of them desperately. Given the scale and difficulty of estimating costs for such large projects, I really do applaud the board and the planners of these Measure Z projects for being so conservative in their planning, that, in their original estimates, that we can have budget flexibility to accommodate these unexpected cost increases. Because I do realize that we have run into so many, so I really do appreciate all of that planning that went into that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'll open up to my board colleagues. Are there any questions? Vice President Coffey.
I was ready to say something. Come back to me.
Okay.
You're okay, I'm a little concerned.
Okay. Trustee Hunt, you have something?
Yeah. Thank you for all the information. So, my, I obviously support funding this, right? We need to continue and move forward with the project. We approved a couple million additional last time, maybe-ish? Okay. So, I guess where I'm going is, in the future, Performing Arts Center, you told us as of today, right, there's, the funding is planned, but we know the cost is going to go up for the Performing Arts Center, based on whatever the estimate is today. That's not going to be what it's going to cost in three or four years. The, the interest earned gives me a little bit of confidence. It's going to be a different board at that time, right? When it's time to approve, it could be a different board when it's time to approve additional funding. I know we're committed to continue to do that. Where I'm going, I'm, I'm long-winded. Where I'm going is, would there be an option to fund the additional $4 million internally, outside of Measure Z, if that's something, you know, the rest of the board would be willing to just think through, knowing we'll need this Measure Z funding in the future, and we may not have the same level of support in the future to fund the Performing Arts Center?
Absolutely. Great question. So, there are other avenues to be able to determine where that funding's going to come from. It could come from the general fund. It could come from other facilities-related funds. It could come from a budget stabilization fund. Yes, there are other funds that could fund the, the increased expense. I do want to make note, if we were to use one of our facilities funds, that may affect other facilities-related projects. Measure Z dollars are only for Measure Z projects. And so, if we use another fund, which we can, we know that maybe another project may be affected, because that funding may not be. But I also want to make a note that, now that we know, if you approve what the GMP is for this particular project, very soon, I would say, within just a few months, do you want to share the next step?
Yeah, so we recently went in contract with Cummings Consulting, so that's going to be the project manager for the Performing Arts. So, once we get this GMP, then we'll know what we have to spend for the Performing Arts Center, and then soon after, within a month, this month, we're going to meet with Cummings and get that game plan to get that project start. So, it's going to be.
So, we can start having those conversations, as to, we'll need to find another $10 million for the Performing Arts Center over the next couple of years. You think we'll have that data soon to start having those conversations?
Yeah, it's, it's not, the Performing Arts isn't going to be, it's not going to be years out. We're going to be doing it soon.
Yeah.
Right.
No.
While school's in.
Well, yeah. Okay.
Yes, yes.
And then, thank you for that. I, I just, you know, want to make it clear, the support for the Performing Arts Center. I know we have this contingency in Measure Z, but we're also going to need the contingency for the next project. In terms of the timeline, we talked about this a little bit, but I think it's important to communicate now with families, so the expectation is clear, you know, that this is going to be extended. And I, trustee Castro and I met with the principal of Elkhorn a couple of weeks ago, and we shared our commitment to get them back in in a year, and it's just, I know there's not a whole lot we can do about it, but I think us communicating early and often, even throughout the project, with updates and kind of if we're on track, or it's being extended, would be the ask.
Absolutely. So, with your ghost, we've already drafted a communication based upon whatever your decision is to send out tomorrow. So, we can make sure that not just the Elkhorn community, but our WSD community is aware of what's happening with one of their Measure Z projects. And so, we'll make sure that we continue that, that communication as we're moving on. You're welcome.
And piggybacking off of that, I think it's important that it's not just our, our community as far as the district community, but also the community that's around the school, since they're going to be also impacted by all of the construction and what's going on. So, I know we have social media, but there are some individuals who are a little bit not as tech savvy as others in that area. So, whether it's a little kiosk or something out there on the campus somehow, some way, saying this is what's happening, what are, kind of like what they do, those, why can't I think of what?
A big banner.
Thank you. Big banner coming to, kind of like, what, you know, those constructions of whatnot, that they do on those sites. But yeah, and it was definitely, my question was about the timeline. I was thinking, yes, the, you know, the banner and whatnot, but also perhaps like, we have an idea of what this build, of, you know, we have the design. I mean, I would even have it semi, kind of like, virtual in the sense of, we got one building down, six to go, five to go, and then, you know, kind of like a little, you know, something to show that, you know, that.
Interactive.
Interact them with the, with the community so that they know. Because honestly, it's, yeah, like, the progress, seeing the progress of what's happening. Because when you see, like, when you're going by, and all you see is the construction walls, and you can't see past it, it's always nice to know, well, what's happening back there? And I know that that's some of, something that I believe Elkhorn would like to know, like, where are we now? How many more? And so, it can also give them some reassurance and less angst of when that timeline, in the, may not be, yes, we're pushing it to January of 2027, but maybe perhaps it could be sooner, depending on, on how progressive it's going. So, just something that I wanted to throw out.
And to add on, if it's sooner, and it's ready, what activities can begin there before we make the full move? What, you know, how can students and staff and the community get to know their new campus? You know, so, you know, there's a lot of contingencies, there's a lot of things that can occur. There's also a lot of great ideas and opportunities.
Yeah. Are there any other questions?
I do. Of course, for me, it's like, I don't want to take any shortcuts on Elkhorn remodeling, and it's always going to be, let's move forward, but I want to be fair with the conversation. I think there, my biggest concern is having a heavy civil and commercial background history, is the, seeing RFI, seeing change orders, and all of the stops that come through with doing those large type of projects. I wonder if, I know there's a lot of, and I know we couldn't do any kind of like incentive building, where they could get incentives with completing the project earlier, because it's probably, it's nothing we even looked at, right? But just having an experienced, and maybe this is something for Daniel, an experienced project manager, that would be able to push ahead the project by their phases, however they're, you know, because I know we do like three-week look-aheads. So, but making sure everybody's on time, and like, for our company, we order material well in advance for our projects. And I know not, not everyone can do that, but I know with, even without the tariffs, to be fair, there was an increase in materials, like lumber, steel, and all of that stuff. So, I understand the extra cost, and usually I'd be like, where's that cost coming from? But because I know that background, I'm like, okay, this is actually.
So, we have weekly OAC meetings. I know at Westfield, they were on Thursday. I'm not sure. So, it's a owner-architect contractor meeting, and every week, we have a three-week look-ahead. XL Construction provides a three-week look-ahead. And then, for Virginia, XL Construction also did drone footage weekly, I believe. And then, I know, I know your ghost was posting them, so that way the public can also see live drone footage, and they can see everything going up, buildings and everything.
It'd be cool if we can save, like, since it's one of the oldest sites, maybe we could save, like, their, the old bell in there, but like, replace that bell, like, somewhere in their, in the school, like, just to have it like a, like a, you know, like, city council has their little shrine out there, like, if we can, I don't know. I mean, they hold, you know, they hold different things out there. You know what I'm, stop it.
Memorabilia.
The memorabilia. But if we could just do something special, like, you know, I don't know. It's such an old site, and all of those old things are going to be gone. We're not going to be able to see that anymore. But I would, I'm fourth generation, my son is fifth, and, and he's not going to be able, he's in eighth, he's going to be in eighth grade. So, by the time you guys finish this, he's going to be already moving to high school. So, I'm like, let's do something special.
Preserve some of the.
Preserve something.
Preserve some of the.
Some of the history, yeah. That's just my little, but yeah, that's it for me.
I'm ready to move when we're ready.
I'm ready to second when you're ready.
Okay, well, wait a minute.
I know.
Okay, I appreciated all the pieces that came up there, except, I, I know you're working hard, but that January move-in date is like, oh, stabbed to the heart. I hadn't heard that. So, I, you know, I just want to keep it really open, if there's a way, you know, not to, if there's a way to move in, and we hire movers over Thanksgiving break, if there's, you know, just so we kind of keep our options open, because if the school's done earlier, I mean, just having this beautiful school sit there while kids are bussing there, it just feels a little. So, I'm, I'm just hoping that we can keep looking at that and keep that open. And then, yes, can we please get a timeline for the, like, a formal timeline or update for us about the Performing Arts Center in terms of when that will look like, so that we know that we're, that we're securing that funding as this, as this board? Because I think that, that is a realistic timeline in terms of the next election and thinking through all that, and so, that we can have a timeline in terms of making sure that all that's secure and safe. Okay, all right. Then with that, now, who and who?
I move.
All right. Vice President Coffey, seconded by trustee Wong, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye to vote aye. Thank you. And thank you for giving your evening. All right, next up, we have our Resolution 2425-43, authorizing the donation of unusable portable classrooms per Ed Code Section 17545. Again, that's with Monique Sobal, our Chief Business Officer, and Daniel Pindar.
So, this item is really about why waste, why throw it in the landfill. We have portables that we are not able to use. However, we are allowed to donate them to another entity. And there's three entities who want to take these portables for their use and are willing to. And the savings to us is about $24,000. Why is it $24,000? Because we would have to pay for removal, destruction, et cetera. So, we are asking for your approval to donate the portables to these three.
Okay, are there any public comments?
No public.
Okay, are there any board comments or questions?
Donate away.
Move.
I move.
I second.
Oh, gosh. All right, move by clerk Castro, seconded by. Okay, are there any board comments or questions?
Donate away.
Move. I move. I second.
Oh, gosh. All right, moved by clerk Castro, seconded by, uh, trustee Hunt. I think we need to do a roll call since it is, um, a resolution. Um, so trustee Hunt.
Hi.
Vice President Coffey. I two vote aye.
Clerk Castro.
Trustee Wong.
Aye.
All right, that takes us to item three, approval of the contract with Mid Pacific Engineering, Inc. for earth work and materials testing and observation services for the Elkhorn Village modernization site. Um, again, Monique Sobal, our chief business officer.
So even though we just now have the GMP, there is a lot of work that's going into this particular project before we break ground. And that's earthwork, that's, um, making sure that the construction or the school will be safe on on the campus with the soil, et cetera. Mid Pacific Engineering, we have contracted them in the past to be able to do geo- geotechnical services for us. At this time, we're asking for you to approve a contract where they will be our geotechnical engineer of record. And what they will do is to make sure that all earthwork, materials and testings are done, are correct, and then also observe construction. Um, that those second set of eyes to make sure that the construction is going as required. This, um, geotechnical engineer of record is actually required by the Division of State Architects, DSA. And we're asking for your approval of their contract. The total value of the contract is 377,600, um, excuse me, 686 and two cents.
Okay, are there any public comments?
No public.
Okay, are there any board comments or questions?
No.
Okay, then can I have a motion? Okay, moved, um, by trustee Hunt, seconded by Vice President Coffey, all in favor.
Aye.
I two vote aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, now that takes us to approval of the renewal of contracted, um, speech therapy services with Connected Speech Therapy, Inc., district-wide for the 2025-2026 school year. Autry Shrikar, Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services.
Hello, so for, um, action item P four, um, our director of special services, Carla Salva, will take us through this item.
Um, so for this item, it's our contract, um, that is a continued contract for the 25-26 school year with Connect Speech. Um, so we are asking for, um, them to continue to provide speech services across the district, primarily with preschool and two of our K eight sites with, uh, speech service.
And the total is 930,720.
Up to that. Are there any public comments?
No public.
Okay, are there any board questions or comments? Okay, then can I get a motion to approve?
I did. I actually have a question, because I don't know if, and maybe I'm wrong, but I, I thought I, we were gonna have some kind of like extra, I guess, knowledge on special education and like all of that stuff. And maybe I thought it was you that asked for it, but we never got it. So I did, am I wrong?
Doctor Hildreth.
Uh, we, we did send a exec summary a couple of weeks ago regarding special ed to give trustees a, a broader overview. And then we said we would then plan a separate study session for.
I just, I guess, I'm, and I'm just gonna say what I just because I, we have a lot of concerns with like staff, right? So Mike, I'm gonna just throw the questions out there. Um, I guess the, my question would be is how, I know it's, those are, those positions are really hard to find, right? Like, hard to fill positions. Um, I think my question, and sorry, because I'm, you're gonna have to forgive my, my lack of understanding or knowledge on this, uh, particular, um, on this item, but, um, the, the services that we contract, the companies that we contract through, how competitive or what is your process when finding a company to contract with?
So, um, I probably get daily emails from different agencies in regards to, um, being able to provide a variety of special ed services. Um, and so my very first question always is, um, can you provide me an in-person full-time SLP? And so that's kind of where we start the conversation. Um, and this last school year, uh, we, we had, um, contracted with a new agency. And with that agency, we went all year and they never provided me any new staff. So where we continue to come back to the, to you, um, for approval on our current agencies that we've had for longstanding, um, partnerships, uh, Connected Speech being one of them, is that they continue to be able to provide me high-quality speech therapists in person. And so it's hard to, to try to find a different agency when I'm not seeing the, the promises that they, they put out there. Um, a lot of times I request to meet with them, talk about what supports that they have for the, their, their speech therapist or PT or whatever we may be looking for. I also request that I get a chance to interview them before they just send me somebody. And so that is an added step that I don't think everyone does, because I wanna be able to vet who we're putting in front of our students.
Okay, and then so, so you do, uh, do like follow-ups with the contracted companies that we've decided to move forward with? Like, how do you, I guess, how would you, um, uh, rate the, I don't wanna say the success, but how do you rate that they're doing a great job within our district for our children, um, and that it works?
Yeah, so, um, there's always compliance checks regardless of they're contracted or not. That's just something that my department does. So that is like a checkpoint for us. Um, if anything that seems, um, you know, an, an area of concern, then I follow up directly with either the employee or the, the provider that supports, um, them. Um, and so I, I ensure that they're providing what the students need, what we need for the district, uh, and then we make tweaks from there.
I was looking at the report that was provided to us and I'm just gonna be completely honest. I was like, I can't understand any of this. And I'm pretty, I can understand contracts and numbers and things like that pretty, pretty easily. And I just, for some, I just couldn't follow along. So I don't know if, I think that's for me, just for me, I'm speaking for me. I, I don't, I, maybe I need a quick, like, who can I get more information from or have like a one-on-one, maybe you? So that I can have a better understanding with, um, for me, I, I wanna be able, I wanna be convicted in my, my vote for any vote for whatever it is. And for me, I'm lacking knowledge on this particular, um, on this.
Yeah.
So.
And just for clarity, um, are you saying the contract and the, how we divide out the support?
Yeah.
Is that you have questions about or just what are regulations and requirements?
Actually, all of it. More, more of like, are you, uh, and not toward you.
Right.
But are you doing your due diligence to find, like, are these contractors, is it competitive? Like, there's a lot of companies out there that provide this service, right? So in my mind, I'm thinking, okay, these are hard positions to fill. Is, is it because these companies have taken the providers, right? Like, that's, I'm thinking.
There's some of that.
Do you know what I mean? Do you get what I'm saying?
Yeah, yeah, I get, I, I think.
They're pulling the market, they're pulling our, like.
So I would say that, um, for speech, speech therapists specifically, there has been, um, it's been a hard-to-fill position even prior to COVID, where we have seen an increase with other positions hard to fill because of COVID. And a lot of, um, companies went virtual, which is never, um, ideal for all students.
Yeah.
We have had to do it because that's just where we've been. But for speech therapists specifically, even prior to COVID, it had, it's been a very tight market. Um, and you know, I've, I've asked around, um, even some of our own, um, contracted staff on, you know, why contracted versus versus a, a school salary from the very beginning, coming out of college. And when they, you know, lay out their options, that's probably the bigger issue. Um, but there's pros and cons and it, it just depends on that individual. But I will share that, um, all the recruitment that we've partnered with HR in doing, we have hired, um, three people that would fill 2.3 FTE. So we are reducing, although I know it's a huge number, we are reducing, um, the need for contracted staff. So a specific contract is not coming back for next year. Um, and the flip side of that also is that our special education numbers continue to rise. So although we hired our own, the numbers continue to increase. So right now, to fill all of our required speech, I would need 16 full-time SLPs. And right now, we will, with these additional, we have six that are district employees. So it's, it's a big, it's a big, uh, gap to fill. Um, and this is why we have to continue with some contracted agencies.
Okay, and that I, and I'm sorry to be so invasive and ask the questions.
Ask all the questions.
It's truly like something, I'm like, oh, my gosh, I, this is something I can't rap or comprehend as quickly as the other stuff. And I'm like, what is going on with me? But, um, I would love to at least get with you at some point and
Definitely.
if you're okay with that and go over all this stuff. But thank you for answering my questions.
Your question too?
Just a comment. Um, and we did receive a really helpful table earlier today from one of our, um, speech and language pathologists in the district that broke out where these contractors would, what sites these contractors would support versus district staff. So that was very much appreciated. That really, because I'm in the same boat, Vanessa, you know, and that really helped me understand the need of this contract versus who we have on board within the district.
Okay, then can we have a motion? Okay, vice president Coffey, move.
I second.
And trustee Wong, seconds, all in favor.
Aye.
I two vote aye. Thank you. Now that's item five, approval of non-public, um, school residential student contract with, uh, Hannah Academy for the 2024-2025 school year. So this, uh, specific contract is for an individual student that we need to place outside of our district and even our county, just because of the, the level of need that the student requires. So Hannah Academy is in Sonoma County. And, um, they are able to provide all of the services and supports that this individual needs. Are there any public comments?
Nope.
Are there any board questions or comments?
Nope. I'll move.
Okay, thank you. Um, no, you got it. Moved by, um, and just Castro. Clerk Castro. I was thinking of your title as I was looking at you. Moved by clerk Castro. Seconded by, seconded by Vice President Coffey, all in favor.
Aye.
I two vote aye. Thank you. All right, and now we have the approval of the renewal of contract, of contracted physical therapy services with Jabber Gym LLC, district-wide for the 2025-2026 school year. Again. Take it away. Um, so this specific contract is, uh, specifically for a physical therapist. Um, they are, um, are also returning, but this specific, um, agency was new to us this year. They started in December. Um, just because it was a hard-to-fill position with, um, a variety of our contract agencies, both new and old. Um, but Jabber Gym was able to provide us, um, a really great PT that, um, we would like to bring on for next year. Uh, and there is at least an error in the agreement, um, that we need to fix, but the total is 87,660. Right above it, how it's written out, it, it says 876. So we need to fix that.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Specialist specialized. Thank you. Are there any public comments?
No public.
Okay, are there any board questions or comments? I think we can make a motion to approve with the correct.
I mean, I, I can move to amend it. Uh, approve it with an amended amount of 80,000.
Eighty-seven thousand six.
Eighty-seven, six hundred. Sixty-six.
Thank you. Okay, moved by trustee Wong.
No sense.
Seconded.
No sense.
Seconded by Vice President Coffey, all in favor.
Aye.
I two vote aye. Thank you. Okay, so it takes us to item seven, approval of the consolidated application for the 2025-2026, um, application for funding. Um, Autry Shrikar, Assistant Superintendent of Education.
Thank you. This is also in Stephanie's department, and so she will take the lead on this item.
Good evening. Thank you. This evening, we are here to request approval of, um, the board for the application for funding. Um, this is submitted to the California Department of Education through the consolidated application process. This is done annually. Uh, we are applying to participate in the following programs, Title One, uh, Part A, Title Two, Part A, Title Three, which is our English learners, as well as our immigrant students, and Title Four. Those are all of our titles, our federal funds, um, that we can apply for. Um, we do not apply for the Title One, Part D, um, because there are no facilities in the West Sacramento for the delinquent youth.
Okay, are there any public comments?
No public.
Okay, then I'll open up any board questions or comments. Okay, Vice President Coffey.
This, um, I would call them the grants, right? How soon would we know once we apply if we were selected for, for it?
This is annual, and so we, we are anticipating these.
Oh, we are anticipating, okay. I wasn't sure. I was like, annually, we try and like, we hope that we get it. So I wasn't sure if that was.
And it is, yeah, correct.
Okay. Okay, all right. That was all my only question.
All right. Then can I get a motion to approve? Thank you, clerk Castro, seconded by trustee Hunt, all in favor.
Aye.
I two vote aye. Thank you. All right. So that now takes us, we do not have board governance this evening, so that takes us to our board and superintendent comments. Dr. Hildreth.
Good evening, uh, board and members of the community. Welcome. Uh, I just want to, uh, thank all staff for a wonderful school year. It's been, um, filled with learning and activities and just great things happening, um, at our sites. And, um, it ended with some wonderful graduations and promotion ceremonies. And just to see the joy from the students who were promoting to the next grade, whether that be kinder or fifth to sixth, or eighth to ninth, or seniors, just that's really why we do what we do, um, to get students to that area and, and the support from, extended family has just been wonderful. So just, uh, wanna highlight that celebration and hope that, um, the majority of staff who are now on summer break, uh, are taking advantage of some rest and relaxation and restoring and ready to come back, because this is a short summer. But we wanna make sure everybody knows we'll be ready. Um, our team will be working diligently throughout the summer, completing different facilities projects and making sure we have everything ready to welcome our students on, uh, August 6th. I also wanna highlight that, uh, we are once again offering our free summer meals for all children 18 years and younger, regardless of school enrollment. So there's no registration or paperwork needed. We can just show up and enjoy a healthy meal. Meals will be served, um, from Monday, June 16th to July 18th. Monday through Friday from 11:30 a.m. to 12:30 p.m. at two locations, either at our bright campus on Todd Hunter or at the Bridgeway Boathouse on, uh, Southport Parkway. So we wanna make sure everyone is aware of that. We wanna highlight that June is National Gun Violence Awareness Month, a critical time to reflect on the urgent need to address gun violence in our communities. And we remain committed to fostering safe environments for all students, staff and families, and know that if we raise awareness, it helps us to have some really important conversations and support, uh, responsible firearm ownership. And we thank the board because we know earlier this year, the board adopted a resolution supporting responsible firearm storage. And we now send an annual notification to families about the importance of safe storage. It's also Pride Month, um, a special time in our district, and we honor and celebrate the resilience, courage and diversity of the LGBTQ plus community. This annual observance recognizes the invaluable contributions of individuals who have championed equity, acceptance and the right who have championed equity, acceptance and the right to live authentically. At WUSD, we are committed to fostering a welcoming, respectful and inclusive environment for every student, staff member and family. And we know that Pride Month reminds us of the importance of acceptance, the importance of empathy and understanding. And it is an opportunity for us to educate ourselves, to challenge stereotypes and promote a culture where everyone feels safe and valued. And then lastly, I want to share that tomorrow, actually, the, we will be partnering with the city for Juneteenth celebration. It's going, it is the day, June 19th, to commemorate the end of slavery in the United States and to honor the ongoing pursuit of freedom, justice and equality for all. We encourage everyone to join in the celebration and reflect on our shared history and continue working together toward a more just and inclusive future. We're going to have our syncopating sea monkeys from River City participating. We'll have activities and booths led by River City's BSU and the football team. There'll be some home run interns, we'll have food trucks and a spray house jumpy, some kind of fun thing with water. So it's tomorrow from 5:30 to 8:30 at the Bridgeway Lakes Community Park at 3650 Southport Parkway. And with that, I wish everyone a safe, restful and rejuvenating summer.
Thank you so much. Trustee Wong, you ready?
Happy end of school year, lots and lots of things to celebrate. It was a busy, I think, Thursday, that Thursday, I think went to five graduations all at once and then ended at Elkhorn. But really grateful for everybody's work, kind of making it happen, seeing all the happy faces of the babies and the eighth graders and the 12th graders is always so amazing. You all work so hard at the school site as well as here. And you're staying here with us late at night to make these decisions, these LCAP, to really do what, really wonderful. And when you have somebody like Brooke to celebrate it all, kind of is a great reminder. When you get to hug all those graduates coming across stage, you're like, oh my gosh, you're so large, you know, not large, but you've grown. It's just an amazing experience. So thank you all for holding that space, holding educational excellence empowerment every day. Equity, excellence, empowerment every day for every student. So that's always, it's always a good high doing that. We had our fiscal meeting in between the last time we met now, then and now, which was a lot of information to digest, a lot of good conversation. A lot of it fed into our budget adoption today. And we know that it'll be amended in a couple, a couple of months after the, the state budget is signed. But really always thankful to staff for the details and spending time with us, kind of talking through what all, you know, kind of the moving parts of budget. So, so thank you for that, more to come soon. I'll end with, I am looking forward to Juneteenth celebration tomorrow. But not to take away from that, there's a small contingent of Asian American, Native Hawaiian, Pacific Islander folk who are gathering to try to figure out a similar celebration, similar to what we did here, but also with the city. Hoping that Washington Unified can support in the same ways they've supported it Juneteenth. I'm just going to put it out, I think they're calling it Rice and Roots, right? Because the multifaceted Asian American histories, so we'll see. I don't know, that's my, I'm putting out there publicly, I, no one's voted on it yet, but I think it's kind of a catchy, catchy phrase. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Hunt.
Thank you. Well, as we've heard, I got to, I had the unforgettable experience of, of being able to attend my first year of graduations and promotions and over the past few weeks. And it was just really cool, you know, seeing it from that lens. And I'm real, it, it was a moment where I'm just really grateful that I have this opportunity and that I get to share it with all of you. And it was really special to see our community come together for our students. And, you know, community is the parents, the grandparents, the friends, the teachers. I was at one graduate promotion and one of the speakers talked about their kindergarten teacher. And I look into the audience and the kindergarten teacher's there, you know, in tears. And it's just, it was a really cool experience. So thank you for giving me the opportunity to be able to experience that. We had the finance subcommittee. One thing, if we could, we talked about purchasing some additional buses. And there was some background as to why we had to do that. So I think that's good information to share with the full board, just the, the reasoning behind why we're having to do that. And it was all new information for me, so I just think that would be good. We also talked, and, and this was just kind of more me, I guess, that, in that meeting, but we receive a lot of funding for very specific things. And some of it is discretionary where we can decide what we can do with it and some of it is not. On the discretionary type of funding, I, I shared this, you know, with the team that evening, but I'd like to see us using the funding for what we're receiving it for. I understand sometimes we'll need to readjust it and use it for other things, like purchasing school buses so we can transport our children in two months. But, um, so I think just further conversations on that are coming. And we heard a little bit tonight, we've got some public comments. My own child is on an ELOP waitlist. I just, having the data would be good to know what our waitlists look like at our sites. And if there is a plan to be able to tackle that or reduce it in any way, or if that's just, just knowing the information, you know, is that where we're at, would be great, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Clerk Castro.
Yeah, I also, you know, the celebrations of all of the promotions and, and graduations, to see it as a trustee this time instead of a family member or parent, that was really special to experience. Seeing these children since they were actually really born, honestly. And seeing them grow, it's just a special, it's a special experience. So I'm going to be quick. We had our city two by two meeting where we discussed the SRO MOU. There, there really wasn't much of an update, other than, I mean, right now, the, the ball is in the city's and chief strange hands to review the MOU. For SRO, Bright Park was on the agenda and they just, you know, discussed the possibilities of the sale of Bright Park, nothing, no big update, updates on that. One thing I did want to, there was a public comment from Alex Warden. And he brought it, one of the topics he brought up was the equity in band. And I've asked probably like five times now. So how do we get this on the agenda? Because I'm not asking anymore, how, how do we get it on the agenda now? Because I've asked a bunch of times and I haven't seen anything come through for me. So I'm asking that right now, do we, do I request that or how does that work?
It was requested and I know that there was an update from staff, but we, we can get it put on the agenda.
Okay, great. I'm done, that's it.
Yeah, okay, thank you. All right, Vice President Coffey.
So much has taken place, all of the celebrations. I have a niece who is now out of preschool and into kindergarten. I have a nephew who's out of kindergarten into regular elementary. I have nieces and nephews who are no longer in elementary and are now in middle school. And I have my daughter who left Riverbank. And that's all at Riverbank, so I was like, so yeah, I'm going to be there for a while. It was amazing. I had a proud mama moment, getting to see my daughter actually speak. If you know my daughter and my, their teachers would tell you, she's a very like mousy, quiet person. And as she started to go through, Riverbank teachers are superb. And they are, as my daughter said, utterly amazing, because they really helped her find her voice. And she highlighted all of her elementary school teachers and then highlighted a few of the middle school teachers. And I've had said prior to becoming a trustee, like I owe Riverbank so much because they literally helped me when I was going through a lot with, for my family and my kids for transition and whatnot. So they really do have a very special place in my heart, so. And so it was very special to be able to have that moment. So when I see Washington Middle College High School's graduation and Yolo's graduation and then River City's high school graduation, all very different, but yet all still special in their own unique ways. I have to say that with River City's high school graduation, it was very nice to be indoors. I will, I am very happy about that. And I know many, many parents and, and observers were also very thankful for that. Of course, this was our first year at this facility and I, I don't know if this is where we plan on being again next year. But I know that if we can start preparing wherever it is for the following year sooner, we can start working on some of the, the, the hiccups. I hope that whoever the committee is, because I don't know, that they get together and talk about lessons learned. This is a great opportunity of what worked and what didn't work. Or what do we need to improve on? And that is not a bad thing to hear that there are areas of improvement because you always want to make it better, you always want to top the next year, right? So some of the things that I've seen on the community discussion board, being that the hearing impaired, like having somebody who can do sign language for individuals who they can't read the lips if it's on the screen and whatnot. So definitely things like that that can be looked into to help the next one. And it's not to say that it was, I thought it went, it went well. I think it went really, 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 really well, considering this was the first time that we were at that, at that venue or that location. I think if that is, like I said, if that's the same one for next year, letting parents know that there's more than one door that they can go in would be definitely a highlight. So that way, parents are not in one single filed line, thinking that there's only one door. And then, and of course, just having that dialogue with the committee and whoever it is for next year. And if it's not the same individuals, let the previous, whoever it was that was doing it this year, leave, leave like, like a, hey, things that we didn't consider the day of, that you may want to consider for the following year. And so that way, every year, and this is probably something that should be a process for the next committee moving forward of best practices, best practices. So it's a living, breathing document so that they're like, almost like a new checklist. Okay, what do I have, what do I have, what do I have, what do I need? So yeah, so there's that. And then also, I know we're doing a lot of wonderful things for summer. And last year, I remember during the summer, that there were certain camps that were happening and it was a requirement depending on the type of camp that it was, whether it was banned or something else along those lines. One of the, one of the concerns that was brought to my attention last year was that these children, and I shouldn't say children, but they're students, young adults are being asked to be present for these all-day camps, yet they're not forgiven a meal. So I'm asking now in advance to make sure that if students are asked to be on campus, well, I give them an hour for lunch. Okay, if you're at River City, you're given an hour for lunch, but you're assuming that they have the money to go to the area to go grab something to eat. Or you're assuming that they brought something. So I'd rather not assume that they have something or money, that they, we provide them an offer, you know, a, a meal, hot meal if, if, or a cold one, whichever one, but just make sure. I, I don't know if you've noticed, I'm really big on making sure our kids get fed. Like I want to make sure our kids are fed. So if you're asking them to be there for five hours of their day, let's make sure that they have something to substantiate them while they're there. And yes, the same thing with the YMCA and the, the ELOP, like what does the waitlist look like? Because I'm curious to know what it is that we need to do to keep that, to get, what do we need? Do we need another body? Like, do we need to talk to, like for the contract? I don't know. And so I'm just interested in wanting to know what, what do we need to do? Okay, thanks, and that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Clerk Castro, for already going over a little bit of the two by two. It was also mentioned that the mayor said she was going to do a climate action video. And so we get to hear a little bit about that, there's going to be a screening. A light in the darkness or something of darkness of light, I don't have the name correct, I can't read my writing. But in any case, to, to be continued. But there has been discussion about how they can engage the community in climate action. And then also I wanted to just give thanks. We had had the wrestling program here, we talked about some of their needs that they had had. And I know the middle school wrestling program has been really successful. And specifically, thank you to Autry Shreek as well for your support with that, because they're now going to be able to start going to competitions and they're very excited to get to roll out their, their middle school wrestling program. So thank you for that. And the graduations were, yeah, there's, I feel like I'm still processing it after all this time because it's intense to look in the eyes of every graduate that we have and see them and shake their hands. And so it is, it is a really special gift to be a part of. And thank you to all of our families for entrusting your children with us and Washington Unified. We take it very, very seriously. And my own daughter also promoted from eighth grade. And it just added a lot to that, to the feelings, because of course I've been there volunteering when she was in kindergarten. And so watching that, watching all those stages of our kids is just really, really powerful and special. And, you know, after they promoted, my mom and I, we ended up sitting under a tree because she didn't want to leave, she was just running around with her friends. They wanted to go visit every teacher, make sure the teachers all wrote in their yearbook. And it was just really, it was really cool to sit there and watch them just run around and, 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 hold on, mom, hold on, I gotta go do this, gotta go get this now. And so we're just really, really grateful for all of our school communities because they really do help us raise our kids. You know, there, it's more than just a place you send your, your students to learn, they're really a part of your family. And we're grateful for everyone who's at the school site, in the classrooms. And then of course, everyone here as well who helps make it happen. And so our LCAP, it wouldn't happen without that, Special Education Services wouldn't happen, wouldn't happen without all these ladies around here too. So I just want to thank you really for all the work because it is really special. And I think that is all that I have then for me. And so that's going to take us now into our future board agenda items. So we will have banned on a future, or I, not banned, but we talked about, well, it says annual reporting for proposition 28, the Arts and Musics in School Act to be determined. So we just want to make sure that this specifically, where it says future agenda items, also talks about our ban program. Okay, I'd also like our future agenda item to have our SRO MOU to be listed as a future agenda item. And we can, this can be an update for us, but I would like an update about maybe how the high school coaches and assistant coaches are chosen, what the ratio is, looks like, or, or how that works. If there's any need to relook at that for us, it'd be good to have some information on it. And then, but that can be an update. Is there anything else for a future agenda item? Nope, okay, then we're going to go back into closed session, but everyone else have a great evening.